Please step forward and spell your last name for the record. Tonight Janelle is tracking time since, I forgot my cellphone, so please step forward for three minutes and give us your last name for the record. Somebody go? I don't. Go ahead and start the public comment, please. Rhonda, you want to go ahead and start? Somebody want to start talking? Go ahead. Public comment for three minutes, spell your last name for the record. Janelle's keeping track of time for us. Okay, go for it. Okay, go for it.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ted Hyde, H-E-Y-D. My address is 917 South Cole Drive in Lakewood, Colorado, and I'm the Livewell-Wheatridge Program Coordinator. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, thanks for your time tonight. This will be real quick. I'm sorry, not on. How's that, guys? Yeah? Okay, thank you. Bud, can you hear me? I think we're good. So I just wanted to make a real quick announcement tonight. May 8th of this year is National Bike to School Day, and I just wanted to let you all know for your constituents, or some of you have kiddos here in school in Wheatridge, some of you may be involved in PTAs. This is an annual national event that takes place, and it's led by the Center for Safe Routes to School. And registration is now open. Registration is free. Registration is very easy, and registration provides any schools that sign up with a lot of great informational resources and a lot of good tools to lead an event on May 8th. One particular is, any schools that register by April 8th are eligible for a weekly drawing, and the prize is a free bicycle rack for their school, and to receive promotional signs from CDOT to promote their events locally. So you know, as we continue to think about great, fun, safe, active ways to get our kiddos to and from school, it's just a great event. If you want any additional information at all, there's a website, again, with a lot of great resources. It's walkbiketoschool.org. So please feel free to share it with your constituents, anybody who you think might be interested. It's a really good event.
Thanks Ted. I have to remind you that a public comment at study sessions for any item on the agenda.
My apologies.
That's okay, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay.
You haven't been here before on study sessions.
Thank you.
No problem. And then I'd like to remind everybody to please silence their cellphones for the meeting, please. I hear twinkles and all kinds of noises tonight, so. Go ahead, who's next, please? Please spell your last name for the record.
Hello, my name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. Live at 2995 Chase Street, and tonight I actually have a comment more directed at our staff we have here today, helping out with the study session, and I guess would like to discuss item number two very quickly. 2012 Year-In Budget Report and Potential Revenue Enhancement Discussion. While I appreciate the creativity of the Wheatridge staff here, I guess I would like to make, I guess, the common point that when discussing revenue enhancements, I'd prefer and the citizens would more of a plain English description of what we are discussing. It was very brief, the topics here. I know, understand that, you know, we're dynamic as we move forward through this, but if we are talking about honestly the tax increases to cover lack of capital improvement funds that have been diverted to other areas, I would like to make sure that staff makes every attempt as possible at being open and transparent when conducting the business regarding this, these tax increases. It's extremely important for this because that's going to really affect the outcome. I think there's plenty of partners out there, citizens and businesses that are wanting and willing to be involved in the conversation, and being out front and open in the beginning is the key to start with this. So when we put together things like that, if we kind of put a little more information, I think it's really going to be beneficial to the long-term outcome. And council, hopefully you, I guess, concur with me, and will direct staff also to be as open as they can when preparing documents regarding these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on any item on the agenda before we move on? On the agenda. No, this is public comment for any item on the agenda. Oh, just your last name, how you spell your last name, and your city or your address. And go ahead and talk loud into the mic.
My name is Rhonda Champion. My address is 6420 West 46th Place in Wheatridge. I would like-
Go ahead and spell your last name for the record.
I'm sorry. C-H-A-M-P-I-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay. I have to admit that I'm not very well-prepared here, but I just realized that the issue about the property at 40, no, I'm sorry, 38th and Dupue was going to be on the schedule this evening. First of all, I'm concerned that when I started becoming involved in the workings of Wheatridge in 2006, there was a big push saying that we needed more homeowners, not rentals. We had too many rental properties. According to information that I looked up just tonight on the internet, we have almost 20% rentals, which is above the national average of rental properties, even though it is in an urban area. And the property at 38th and Dupue, even though it is supposed to be townhomes, still is not something that encourages families to stay there, and it's in an area where I think it could almost become like a bedroom community, you know, where people go from Wheatridge to Denver to wherever because of its location. It doesn't, it doesn't feel to me like it's something that is really going to encourage people to stay here, raise a family, that sort of thing. And I'm also very, very concerned about the TIF involved here. I don't pretend to know a lot about TIFs, but what I do know is that when developers and people pay less, I pay more. When they get a break on their taxes, I have to pay more for my services. Some child in the school pays more for their backpacks, their notebooks, their school activities, and the fact that it is two council people who are involved in this, and people who get TIFs are normally people who are well-connected. This just doesn't feel right for me at all, and I'm disappointed that it's a possibility that this will be passed. I'm hoping that the council will reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Snow. Sorry to come two weeks in a row, but I'm upset two weeks in a row, and that's not bad. I also am very much against giving the property tax back to this particular development. First, I don't really think it meets the intent of the usual TIF program, which was to have some kind of commercial development that we would give, we the city would give them some money upfront, or as you go along, because you were fairly certain you were going to get tax revenue. Now, this particular property, I go back in time, I was on the Planning Commission. I had left the city council, I was on the Planning Commission, and we actually changed the zoning ordinance to create a mixed-use district for that particular property, and it was never built on. Now, I think I'm correct, that there's no commercial planned in there, so I don't quite know why anybody would want to give the property tax back. I also think it's patently unfair. I say this partly for people at home, I'm not sure people understand that when the city of Wheatridge lets people keep their property tax, that they take it away from the school district, the county, the fire district. So in other words, you're going to let somebody build 20, whatever it is, units, and our fire department wouldn't get any money from that for a long, long time. It's unfair in another way. I shouldn't speak about my family, but my daughter built a very nice house in this city, which is what you wanted, and I'd like to know if she could come in and you'd give her her property tax back, because she would just be ecstatic. And one last comment, I looked, supposedly they claim this property is blighted, and you know, it's been a real disgrace for many years. A plain piece of empty property is not blighted. I mean, maybe they could throw a few tires out there or something and meet that. It's not blighted, it's a vacant piece of land, and it should not get a tax rebate. Thank you.
Nancy, could you please spell your last name for the record?
Jones, J-O-N-E-S. No, Snow, S-N-O-W.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment before we move on? Any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to move to add an item number six, or I guess it'd be five, Excel Undergrounding Policy.
All in favor of adding a undergrounding policy discussion?
We'll be, we'll be talking again about the 32nd and Kipling with that.
Yeah, it's in the packet, that's a possible discussion.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All in favor of that? Well, it was emailed to everybody, I think there's some here. No, it was emailed by Mr. D-
The information I put out the next day because I was out of town, I couldn't get it. I might have a-
There's some copies up here. All in favor of having discussion, item number six, adding it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. All right, we'll move on to item, well, Patrick, do you want to do a staff report for the part of Excel tonight?
Yeah, I was planning on giving, just a verbal update on 32nd Youngfield Excel project, if that's what you meant. You had said Kipling.
No.
Oh, it's not, okay. Okay, I, yeah, I have an update on the 32nd Youngfield issued at Undergrounding Project that we're, it's ongoing with Excel, and we had some issues with Excel on who's to pay for that project.
You want to do your update now, and we'll do the other two, item six?
Sure.
You want to do item six first?
No.
Does everybody have a problem, just do item six first?
I don't care.
Mr. Dahl is planning to attend tonight, and he had some comments on 32nd Youngfield, but I could start, and he can make comments when he comes. Wait for Mr. Dahl.
Wait for Mr. Dahl.
He said he thought he'd be here by 7:30.
Okay.
Okay, well then we'll go ahead and do item 1A, which is the 38th Avenue Corridor Development Plan.
And I need to recuse myself. I've done consulting work to do with the entitlements of that property, and if it moves forward, I'll continue to do fee-for-service work on that project, so I'm going to step out.
I think it's also important to clarify that you're not an owner of the property.
I'm not an owner of the property.
Thank you.
Okay, so let the record show that Mr. Reinhardt excused himself because he has a potential conflict of interest in the property. And move on to Patrick?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is, was listed under staff, staff reports, this is really not a staff report, it's a little more detailed than that, but, so, the 38th Avenue, modification of 38th Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan. This concerns the Perrins Row Project. We've, it's a 26-unit townhome project at 38th and Dupue, which is in the 38th Avenue Urban Renewal Area. Crosswire Investments is the developer on this project, and they've requested a TIF agreement with the Urban Renewal Authority. And because of that, the city council has to consider amendment, an amendment to the 38th Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan to allow for tax increment financing for this project. So that's the decision in front of you this evening. Well, the decision is if we should bring it forward to the next council meeting, it just takes a motion to approve that amendment. The builder in this project is Newtown. Newtown is a very reputable builder. They have projects in the Stapleton neighborhood, and the project that they have proposed for this site is modeled after the Central Park Row Homes in Stapleton, and there are photos on the website if you'd like to check that out of what that looks like. Since we did receive a TIF request, we had a third-party analysis conducted of the proforma for this project, and the report is in your, in your packet, so you should have that in your packet. Basically, just to cut to the chase, the analysis did conclude that a TIF subsidy is warranted for this project, primarily because of the uncertainty of what the sale price, prices could be for these units at this location. For this type of product, and quality of this product, both the builder and the developer and our third-party who did the analysis, all verified that this type of product could probably sell for close to $270,000 in more desirable areas of the metro area, other than Wheatridge, sorry to say at this point. So if this product was built in Stapleton, or Highlands, or Berkeley, they probably could get about $270 a unit, and it wouldn't require a subsidy, because that's enough, the sale price is high enough that the developer will receive a reasonable return on their investment. However, the analysis conducted shows that the sale price for these units here in Wheatridge would probably be closer to about $250,000 per unit. And there's a number of factors for that, and it's really because of the size and configuration of the site, that, which is going to require that many of the units are going to be right adjacent to 38th Avenue, so they're going to be facing a major, a street. And you know, this neighborhood really has had no new commercial or residential development in some time, so this is risky for a project like this to come into this neighborhood. Some of the residential uses that are current, currently adjacent to this site are not potentially the highest standard product, maybe the rents and the sale prices are not comparable to what this product would be. So there are definitely some, and I think there's one other area they talked about too, that even though the city's really trying to create 38th Avenue as a walking corridor to commercial activities, retail activities, it's really not that yet, especially on the east part of the Sheridan Corridor. It's close to maybe a grocery store and a few other small places, but today it's not a walkable neighborhood such as right in the center of Highlands, or LoHi, or Berkeley. So that, that's a detriment also to the site, which just doesn't allow you to get a high enough price for these units to get the return that you need. So the analysis was done, and the request, again, was for a TIF for a tax increment finance, a property tax only. Obviously, there's not going to be a sales tax on this, this project over a 20-year period. The developer was looking for approximately $225,000 of net present value on this project in order to make the project feasible, and also to obtain additional financing that he needs for the project. Over a 20-year period, that adds up to about $467,000 for the developer, but the net present value of that is about $215,000. So that's what that's worth to the developer today. It's only 215, because it's spread out over a 20-year period. However, the Urban Renewal Authority would also receive about, just under $300,000 from this tax increment, which can be used for urban renewal projects for this development or along the 38th Avenue Corridor. So that's really kind of the short description of this. I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so I think I will conclude there. Staff does recommend approval of this, and council amending the urban renewal plan. We really feel that this is a catalyst project for the corridor. It's bringing new, modern, updated housing options to the city. We're right in the middle of a housing diversification study, and one of the findings of that is that we don't have this type of product in the city. You know, a newer product that potentially will attract those types of households that we're looking for. We, again, are trying to create a walkable community along 38th Avenue. We're investing a lot of city dollars into the corridor to make it a main street, to make it livable in a mixed-use corridor. Interestingly, we've been meeting with private investors who've done commercial projects in Denver, in other areas, to see if they would be interested in investing in this corridor. And when we told them about this product, and this project, and the builder, Newtown specifically, they said that this type of project will definitely act as catalyst for additional private investment. This is the type of project that developers like to see, commercial developers like to see. So it, the word catalyst is definitely, I think, apropos for this project, and they really think that subsidizing this, even though it's not a sales tax generator, will hopefully increase sales tax in other areas along the corridor. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
I just wanted to add some discussion from the Urban Renewal Authority to add to Patrick's comments. There were quite a bit of discussion through the Urban Renewal Authority. We were pleased to see a reputable builder wanting to develop in Wheatridge. One of the questions and concerns that we've heard several times was dollars being taken away from some of our services as far as the fire departments and that type of thing. We have been in contact with the fire chief. Steve Art has been discussing this project with him to assure that it is okay with the fire department. I think the other thing, when you look at the breakdown of the services, of the payment of the increments, the first seven years would be 80% of the TIF, of which this development is going to develop in phases, so the amount of properties that will need to be covered by the fire department and those types of services will not be, you know, 26 units plopped on a, right there, year one through seven, but it'll be a gradual building of the units, so some of those services aren't going to be necessary right away, depending on how quickly they move. And then if you see from years eight through 20, the TIF is a 55% TIF for the, for the property taxes. And I think the one thing that I want to emphasize right now is, on that empty lot- And I think the one thing that I want to emphasize right now is, on that empty lot, we are getting very, the city, the services, the school, all of the above, is getting very little property tax into their coffers because the property is not, the value of the property is very low. But I think if you think future, this is going to raise the property, the entire property of this lot, which would increase, in the end, that entire lot to give more monies to our services, our schools, our community. And it was supported by Urban Renewal. I also support it. It brings in the great debate of what comes first, retail or rooftops. And I think this is our opportunity to bring in some rooftops of some potential community members that could purchase homes at the mid-250s ideally and support some of our efforts and also change our, some, or work to the demographics of Wheat Ridge and changing some of that. So those are just some additional things that we talked about at Urban Renewal that might help in the discussion.
Thank you. Covered quite a few things that I missed, thank you. And I just want to clarify too, that Christie mentioned that the first seven years would be an 80, 20% split on the increment with, between the developer and the Urban Renewal Authority. The remaining time would be a 55% split. So over the 20-year period, it averages out to a 60-40 split. 60% of the property tax increment going to the developer, 40% going to the Urban Renewal Authority.
Ms. Jay? You were leaning back.
I was leaning back. Is this how I start? I'm feeling pretty positive about this. I didn't care for, when I was first reading it, about the arbitrary setting of the bleed value, the owner's value of the property being at 650,000, I believe it was. And the market with that was just under 500 for something. But in talking to Patrick, I understand that there's been some adjustment in that direction.
There has. The developer originally listed his sale price at approximately 625,000. When the third-party looked at that and analyzed that, they said that was a little bit high. But that was based on a internal, an IRR, a return rate for the developer of only 11%. Most developers look at a minimum of 20%, I think, before they're going to put that much investment and risk into a project. So the developer took that in consideration, and he dropped the sale value of the property down to the 450 or 425 that the third-party recommended. And that does bump the return rate up to an 18% instead of 11%.
The one other thing is, reading back and forth sometimes gets sort of muddy. The amount of actual tax, property tax rebate, I will call it that, that's probably not the right word, but the amount of money that they receive, is that going to be in the 225 level if we do this split that we're discussing, the, what basically amounts to a 60-40 split?
Yes.
I saw some potential it could be a lot more, but...
It would be capped at, over 20 years, it'd be capped at 467,000, which, that's how much you'd actually, the cash value in a 20-year period, but the net present value of that to the developer is worth about 215,000 on day one.
I don't understand that difference.
Net present value is comparing the present value money with, it's with the future value of money.
Oh, now I get you.
When you're, when you take into account inflation.
The inflation factor.
Maybe Bud, Bud's a developer, maybe he can help explain it. It's, it's a, there's a special key on a calculator to figure that out, so it's...
The value of money over the number.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So it's...
Okay, Ms. Langworthy?
I don't see the numbers that I was kind of looking for, but...
What are you looking for?
I guess because to try to address that difference. So the property value now has, and it collects this much sales tax. And that's what the TIF is going to...
Property tax.
The property tax, sorry.
Yep, that's the base, yep.
Property tax. So when they develop it, that property tax is going to go up.
Correct.
But the TIF is really still based on...
The TIF is the increment between what it's worth today, what we're bringing plus, yep. That's, the difference is called, is the increment, and that's what we're sharing. So the taxing districts that are receiving property tax today off the property vacant, they'll still receive that.
Yeah, they're still going to get that.
That portion.
That portion that they would have gotten no matter what.
Yes, yep.
It's just the extra that they're not going to get all of for the first 20 years. But that's why I always want to make sure, is that there's, if they, if it didn't get developed, they would still collect the same amount over the next 20, if it remains undeveloped for 20 years, they're going to still get basically the same amount.
Correct. Good question.
The concern of the fire department would be is that now they have to protect 28 units, where right now they're protecting grass.
That's true, but they do get, I mean, they'll get, in the first seven years, and it's not fully, it's not, it's not, like you said, plopping down 26 units. So in the first seven years, they're only putting a few units, and they're still getting some of that. And then after the, as of year eight, they get 45%.
Correct. Well, and as Christie mentioned, that's another good topic to talk about. Steve is, Mr. Art is speaking with the fire district, and they're going to talk about this at one of their board meetings. And we can definitely negotiate to... Which we've done in the past. The TIF project that we had for the Safeway Development Town, which we called the Town Center Development, that was 100% TIF agreement increment. At the Urban Renewal Authority collected that at that time and gave the money back to the developer. But the fire department at that time wanted to keep their increment and the city, or the Urban Renewal Authority, negotiated that with them. So we basically, if I remember, this, that ended in about, that TIF, after 25 years, ended in about 2006. And we were given, at the end of the year, we'd write a check to the fire department for about $12,000. That was their increment. So you can do that, you can negotiate with any taxing district based on what you think the impact might be to them. And really, I think the fire department is probably the only taxing district that may have any impact from this development. We're not required to share any increment with any taxing district in this case. If it was a substantial modification to the urban renewal plan, we would have to do an impact report and send that to the county and potentially share it with the county. But we don't have to do that, because this is just a minor amendment to the plan.
And one more question.
Yes.
So you were talking about part of the, all right, so the present value of a, all right. And so they're getting, they're still only really getting that X amount. It's just in the future, the value looks different. But you were talking, or at least I thought it, maybe, I thought I heard you say that part of this money that is collected goes into urban renewal as well.
Correct.
So when we, when you have negotiations with the fire department, could some of that money come from what would have gone to urban renewal? And so it really doesn't impact the overall project, and we still keep the fire department happy?
Correct.
Patrick, can you clarify something on the 60-40 split? Doesn't 40% go to the Urban Renewal Authority and 60% to the developer? Nothing would go back to those entities until 20 years?
Correct.
So 40% still goes to urban renewal, it doesn't go to the entities?
But we could, but the Urban Renewal Authority could negotiate and give that to the fire department or any other district.
Clarifies that. We really needed to make sure that the fire department was reimbursed for the expenses that they're going to, hopefully not too many, because it's a new building, so... Not any, you know, shortages in the wiring or whatever, but we have that little buffer that we can use to make sure that the most impacted could be taken care of.
Correct.
And we have been meeting with the, you know, fire department to make sure that they're represented. We don't want to do something that...
Mr. Pond?
No, I look forward to our discussion on the dais.
Good. Mr. Starker?
When I looked at this project in the larger sense, I've driven by that vacant property, and I can't remember whether there was something there when I moved in in the mid-1970s. But certainly for a long, long time, there's been no development on that. There hasn't been a lot of residential development in District One in the 35 years that I've lived here. I think it's, I think it's legitimate for the city to try to attract and reasonably work with developers who are building a product. It's, I want to point out, not a for lease product, it's a for sale. So we'll have permanent residents living there on 38th Avenue. I think we have the opportunity to, for the merchants up and down 38th and throughout the city to collect sales tax on goods and services for the people that live in that. And I think that's overall good for our city. And I hope that when we get to the dais, we're able to make this project go forward.
Mr. Stites?
You don't have terms, do you?
Just a little.
No? Okay. Excuse me.
We can share.
I fully, am fully aware of what's being done down below there on the redevelopment. And that lot was a Mars gas station years ago. Then it became a, another type of gas station. So I'm fully aware of that. And that being said, and I said it before in this last time, I don't think the city's in the business to provide profit for developers. There's a risk involved, and you're asking the citizens of Wheat Ridge to accept that risk. If you can only get 250,000 here, I don't think it's our responsibility to make up to the 270,000 that you might possibly get someplace else. I think that should tell you something about the project in itself, that you're not going to make as much money here. So do you do the project or don't you, you know? And like I said, I'm fully aware of, you know, housing needs and particular things like that. But I think you're asking the citizens of Wheat Ridge to do an awful lot here that I just, I don't think it's right. I don't think we've ever done that, where we have built in profit for a developer. I can't agree with that, I won't agree with that. You know, if it was something to do with sidewalk streets, you know, particular things like that, possibly. But this is profit. That's all it is, it's profit. So you're asking the fire department, you're asking Jefferson County Schools, because if you have families move in there, they're going to not get the tax break. And I'm sure they're not going to be too keen on negotiating a deal on that. So you got the fire department, you got school district, you've got the water department, you got the sewer district, all of which are going to be hooked up to the sewers, so you're going to cut those out of the deal. And I'll wait for a lot of this on the dais, but I just, I cannot see, and I will not, go with the, that we're providing a profit for developers. I don't buy that, because it has nothing to do with blight or anything like that. That's a vacant lot, you know, and the guy sat on it all this time, you know? He's brought in different projects from time to time, gets ready to do it, and either he can't get financed, loses his financing, so it's sad. And I will reserve a lot of this comment for the dais, but I will not and cannot go for the city providing a profit for these developers.
I guess I just wanted to say a few words, because the night of the meeting on the dais, I'll be chairing the meeting, and I won't be saying too much, obviously. But the concerns I have is that between the King Supers and some other projects and on 38th, and then on this project, I added it up, we're about a million dollars of tax rebates between the last six months to a year that the council has allocated as potential tax rebates and S-Step and TIFs of over a million dollars, almost a million dollars. And I've never, in the 18 years I've been involved, I mean, it's a good project, but I've never seen where we've given a tax break or a property tax break to a completely residential project. It's usually been sales tax-based somewhat of retail commercial, like, and that's what's concerning me about this a little bit. I think it's a great project, it's good for the city to have some new development. And I guess the other question I had is, besides the tax rebate of over a million dollars to all the projects around the town, plus the fact that we've never really given a tax break to a completely residential project, the concern I have is that we are 50% rental. We've talked about that more than once. My question is, is can the developer and the seller require that their owner occupied through the deed, needs a trust, or is he's going to be turned into rentals eventually? Again, 20 more, 28 more units? Can you, can you tie the developer that they have to be owner occupied? Is that even a possibility, or is that something out of the scope of the agreement?
Yeah, I think there's a way to do that. Both the builder and the developer will be here next Monday night, so to do a small presentation on the project and answer any questions. So if there could be a question, you could ask them.
So I guess council, what I'm suggesting is, I probably won't be voting on this, because we're going to have seven or six people here because of abstentions. I'm asking to check, take a look at a requirement that they be owner occupied when they sell them for a certain amount of time, and also look at the fact that with the fire department, they will be, have to protecting, right now it's a vacant piece of land, and they'll be protecting houses and homes, that there's some negotiation that, on the residential, that they be able to get, recoup some of their costs over the time. So those are the only comments I had about it. But I think it's a good project as far as some new development in the city. Christie?
Patrick, just for clarification, so on the dais, what we'll be doing is discussing the changes to the plan, the 38th plan, correct?
Correct, yep.
So, I mean, we can certainly mention, you know, that we want to make sure that if the fire department needs represented in those types of things, that we consider that in the negotiations. But that's not something, that's not the object of Monday night, correct?
Correct. The object is to amend the 38th Avenue plan to allow for TIF for this project.
Thank you.
So when would you actually do the, talk to the developers about owner occupied units?
It would be part, if that's a direction, and if it's legal, something we can do, that'd be part of the TIF agreement that we have with the developer, the Urban Renewal Authority has with the developer.
So just a thought, I know when I was in Denver and owned townhomes and that type of thing, a lot of those associations did require that, and I'm sure, certain they're going to have some type of association in that area, did require that so much was, had to be owner occupied. So I'm sure that's something that we could request in their association bylaws or something.
Because we've done that with the housing authority projects, when there were condos, that the H.R.A. required so many to be, a percentage to be owner occupied. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just questions. So just out of curiosity, the developer did or did not look at commercial aspects of the development?
Not during this phase of the project, I believe. As Mr. Stites mentioned, this, there was, this came to the city, I think, a couple of different times in the past. And I think one, one project proposal had some retail with it, but it just didn't work at that time.
And I'm assuming, I'm just making this up, but I'm assuming that if they were somehow incentivized to do commercial on the ground level, as an example, that they, because of certain density and/or height restrictions, they may not be able to meet the requirements of their expectations of occupancy?
Correct.
Okay. And then, did you, did they, did you, or did they look at other tools? Other financial tools to incentivize this project for them?
I cannot answer that, don't know.
And then the portion that would go back, the percentage portion that would go back right now to renewal Wheat Ridge, that would, just like we've discussed, that that portion might be available to compensate or share back to the fire department. It would be essentially available to share back to any of the entities, is that correct?
Correct.
And any discussions about that? Like how it would affect, how it would affect renewal, renewal Wheat Ridge if it was all shared back? I mean, it's, it's 300, it's 300 over 20.
Over 20, yeah.
Okay. So, anyway.
Christie, do you have an answer for that, or?
I mean, how it'll affect urban renewal, I think a lot of it's going to depend on what the fire department, what their request is. I know at this point, and I've only had brief discussions with Steve or Mr. Art, that he has talked to Mr. Gillespie, Chief Gillespie, and he doesn't feel that there'll be a high need for the fire, for the fire department. It doesn't, he doesn't expect it to be an older population that moves in there and does not feel that it would be a highly utilized area for the fire department. But again, those are discussions that still need to be had, so the impact at this point, I'm not certain.
Yeah, I guess my question, I guess, is more, you know, what does that 300 mean to the, to renewal Wheat Ridge over, over, over 20 years? In other words, is it all available for other, for all other entities? So something to think about.
I just, the council rules really don't apply, allow discussion back and forth once, because this is kind of time for council. once, because this is kinda time for council to discuss these, sorry. Let's council watch the rave. Does council, do you wanna?
A little further discussion, I mean, any money that we might gain from that might help us pay off other debt that we didn't make in one area, or help us develop in another area, so it would definitely help the urban renewal process. You know, within 20 years, I don't know where, where that money's gonna be targeted, but it could definitely go back to our, the vision of the urban renewal.
Okay, thanks.
So counsel, I had just one question. If it's legal and they can do this, does anybody on council have a problem if urban renewal did talk to the developers about a certain percentage, hopefully a higher percentage being owner occupied, does anybody have a real heartburn with that? One way or the other? Because that's a win-win, I think, for the city and for the neighborhood, because there's so many apartments on Dupuy right now, you know, and I just hope they can get 250 a unit, I really do.
Well, and I think that's another thing that was discussed in urban renewal, is the risk is really with the developer, because if they don't get that dollar amount, then they don't get the TIF that they, they projected. So when we talk about the risk, the risk is with the developer, it's not with the taxpayers and that type of thing, it's, it's on the developer.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we move on to item two? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Did we need to do a consensus?
Nope.
Just an information.
We could do vehicle replacement, too, if you want, this might take a couple. Vehicle replacement, okay. Yeah, okay, it'd be Tim.
Patrick has requested that we move on to vehicle replacement, item three. Does anybody have a problem with that? As I guess, Tim's up. Tim, do you wanna come on up, and I guess we're talking vehicle replacement now, item number three instead of two? Thank you, sir. Mr. Stites, did you wanna start this off, since you've been talking about this for a while?
You know, I read all about this, I read that there's fleet management programs for everybody. I was just talking about these vehicles that are listed, that I think could be fixed, if they need to be, at a, you know, more reasonable rate. And then also, too, I think that, as far as, you know, cuts in the budget or whatever, it concerns me what could happen between, you know, what's now, you know, I'm sure we've used an overabundance of salt and sand and, you know, particular things like that. So my main concern is one, I think that these vehicles are fine for today, but my main concern is I think we can save and withhold purchasing vehicles at this particular time, because I don't see a need for it, and like I said, it does concern me that we need to start cutting back on some of this money that we're spending on some of this stuff, and that's my concern. So yes, I'm fully aware of fleet management schedules and particular things like that, but what I concern myself with were, were the purchase of these vehicles, to replace these vehicles, and I just didn't really see a need at this time to do that.
Well, I guess the night of the meeting, Mr. Reinhardt made a comment that, you know, we have a policy, we should be following the policy, and I understand your comment. So what I'm asking counsel is, is there a win-win here where we could have a policy, but there could also be some flexibility for counsel to not buy, not buy, Tip Davis or Tim, do you have some suggestions on a, some more flexible policy, or Mike?
Well, I don't, I mean, I've worked with a very little bit limited experience with fleet maintenance policies, and, you know, there's a number of things that can go wrong if you, you can, two things, if you, if you just continue to defer, two bad things can happen. One is, you can end up spending more, and I don't, I don't know when we get there, but there's a theoretical time when you're spending more fixing than you're spending on replacing, and I don't, that's what I thought our maintenance policy was designed to do, and I don't have enough knowledge. And the other thing, that bad thing, I suppose a dollar later is always better than a dollar now, but, but to push, it seems like, and I don't know how, again, this puts into policy that there ought to be a cycle, that you don't wanna have all 300 vehicles come up in the, in the same, same year. So I'm not sure I have an answer, but my, my preference would be that we, if, if, is it, that we find that breakpoint and then try and not, you know, guess on any, I mean, that we have a program and, and not take each vehicle individually, I suppose, is all. But I, you know, if, I, would I be speaking out of turn by saying, your conclusion is that the policy is putting up vehicles for renewal bef, before you think we have to? Is that, is that about this year in our financial situation?
Well, yes and no.
Yes and no, okay.
It goes along with our financial situation, you know, here, pretty soon we're gonna be talking about year-end review and potential revenue enhancements. Well, we gotta start cutting the butt, we gotta start somewhere along the line, cutting particular things. When I first got on council, they were dumping vehicles at 30, 35,000, which I thought was ridiculous, because you'd only replace plugs till 100,000, and then we, you know, increased it, and then we increased it again, and I think that, you know, once, I think it was like 125,000 or whatever, but that vehicle may still be okay. You know, it still might be all right. Like I said, it just, I understand fleet management, I have no problems with fleet management, but my deal was with these particular vehicles, I just did not think we need them at this particular time.
Mr. Pond?
So, I, I think I agree with where Davis is, is at least understanding and/or trying to explain where we're at. In some ways, I think it's, when I look, when I did look at the policy, I certainly understand some of the reason, you know, the numeric reasons for replacement and that, and it is interesting that, I went through it, I looked at that chart, and it wasn't until I got back around and did some studying, kind of out of this report, to understand a little bit more about vehicle replacement policies, plans, strategies, that I, that I saw a description of that graph that you have in your replacement guidelines, and understood it a little bit better. And of course, the bottom line is, is that the right time to cycle the vehicle is when that top line dips to its lowest point, before it starts going back up. If you could time that, that is the way, the place to do it. What this doesn't have, that's, you know, and I'm not sure how you get this or not, but the other presentation and the other information that I was looking at had real numbers that we're looking at, not only replacement costs, but maintenance, annual maintenance costs, a number of other things, where, you know, the metrics of that low point were very clear to be seen as you were getting to it or coming out of it. How you really do that, how you find that, I think is maybe what is not inside of the replacement guidelines right here. In other words, it's not so much making this more flexible, I think there is a reason to make this more flexible as a document, but actually, it might be that there needs to be a little bit more rigor to the document, to the policy as well, if that makes any sense at all, that there's a little bit more metrics, some more rigor to how we do it, and obviously, the ability for us to still build in flexibility to look at, to look at individual cases. So, even in looking at some of the graphs of the vehicles that we're placing, it's hard for me to tell whether or not we've actually gotten to that, to that low point. I mean, I don't know that those, and Tim, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if those are equivalent graphs. I mean, I think they're showing, they're showing depreciation against, against, maintenance costs, real or anticipated, right? And they actually, you know, they all have some upward curve, you know, looking at 13, 14, 15 numbers, anticipated, you know, maintenance costs. But I'm not sure that, that, what I couldn't reconcile was whether or not those actual graphs, looking at the Honda as an example, in fact, were some, some, you know, quantifiable reflection of this graph that you have on your replacement guideline sheet, because I didn't quite think so after I, after I looked at it carefully enough. So for instance, I'm not sure, the Honda's an example, whether or not we're actually at that low point yet, because clearly what, what the, what the best man, the best practices out there seem to say is that, just what Davis is saying, which is, is that you can't defer this forever, you do need a, you need a, you need a long-term plan, and it needs to be a cycle. You know, you have a 300 fleet vehicle, you have to cycle through this, you cannot get behind it, or else you'll be in trouble. And that if you do it just right, and I'm sure it's as much art as science, you know, you'll hit these things at the sweet spot when they hit, when they, when they kinda get to their lowest point. But again, I don't, in the guidelines, I don't quite see the metrics that you use to find it. And what I would love to see, for instance, is that there's some math involved, like, you know, because clearly that's how you have to do it. You have to, you have to look at the cost of the new vehicle versus the anticip, you know, versus the depreciation versus the anticipated maintenance costs, and that's how you actually graph that low point. And I, and I guess I just don't see enough of that in the work right now, so that I would encourage us, you know, to see if we can, if we can get to that place.
So, I, I think that, that what you're saying is actually there, I just, I think that the titles are a little different, because in this one, under the, on that, when they're saying decline in resale value, if we keep the example as a Honda, you know, that blue slash green line means it's fully depreciated, that means it's reached its full value, there's nowhere else for it to go, I mean, they can't get any more money out of it than that now, it's maxed, and actually, you probably, you run the risk of actually losing more, I mean, when you hit that fully depreciated point, you actually wanna get rid of your vehicle, because once it's fully depreciated, you get nothing back from it, and you lose more. So if you, you know, if you set your full depreciation to be at $2,000, and, and you hit it, and you keep on going beyond it, you may at some point only get 100 back, and you're really, you were expecting to get 2,000, so that's kind, that impact's sad.
Tim, is it, are they equivalent graphs?
No, not exactly.
Not exactly, but they're close.
No, not really.
Really? Okay. But they still are fully, thank you, but they are still fully depreciated, right?
Yes.
Okay, except for one vehicle.
Yes, yes.
Which still, I mean, it still impacts your resale of this vehicle, if you've depreciated it at 2,000, if you go and sell that for anything less than 2,000, you have a bigger loss than what you anticipated, and when you hit, as a tax accountant, when you, when you hit your fully depreciated value, you want to get rid of whatever that item is, because at that point, you've, you bought it for 20,000, you're saying the salvage value is a 2,000, you wanna, when you've depreciated the 18, you wanna get rid of it. Otherwise, you're not, you know, it causes other impacts than just simply.
I guess I understand, and from an accounting perspective, but if a vehicle could last five more years and you get work out of it, do you really wanna sell it? That's just a question, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm looking at a 2001 Honda, okay? I'm not really sure you're gonna get much more out of it.
Joyce, did you wanna?
I, I guess what I was wondering is, I don't know that, that we're looking for what we're gonna get back out of it as far as resale is concerned, what we're really concerned about here is maintenance, the level of increase in maintenance, would that be right?
It, no, it's a combination of things.
It's a combination?
Yes.
The continued depreciation of value as well as the maintenance?
It's a combination, it's serviceability, it's availability, and there's all kinds of things that come to play, and I'll be able to go into that a little bit later.
And just one point on the availability issue, certain vehicles, emergency vehicles, we don't wanna have availability issue, we don't running them at the point where there's, we want our police cars to go where they need to go, so I don't know where that plays into all of this, but, you know, it's, it's sort of not optional for our police cars not to go where they need to go when they need to get there, it's just too much at stake. I guess, any, I don't know how, did, Kristy, did you, I mean, I'm trying to figure out who went, do you wanna, anything more to say on this? Or, I hadn't heard.
Well, yeah, thank you. I, I mean, I think, I do think there's a lot of things that play into it, and I think everyone's touched on it, I think it's reliability, and, you know, the cost of fixing it, and I hate to say it, but I've owned Hondas, and my Hondas go forever, so a 10, 12-year Honda doesn't bother me, and, and even a 2007 Ford F-150, I, it does have the miles on it, but any more miles goes a little bit longer, so, I mean, there, although like the Honda rates that there's an average reliability, and, and so if you look at the Honda, it's like, well, yeah, it could be replaced, but it looks like we might be able to go for a few more years, whereas you look at the F-150, although it seems like a very new truck, the reliability's poor, and I, I kinda would, I'm kinda also tracking with George to know, it's curious, you know, I know it has the projected, on the graph, the projected operating and maintenance costs, but it'd be curious to know if you know those, you know, is the Honda, does the Honda need all the belts replaced, and, you know, those types of things, that would be, like, that's $1,200, and that's, needs to be done, and, and those, you know, so it's hard, because I can't look at some of these, in my world, I'd, a 2007 Ford F-150 would be fine, and also a 2001 Honda. So, I, I do wanna, in the interest of, of money, be cautious of replacing things just to replace it, but at the same time, also know that things need replaced.
Mr. Stites?
In defense of the public, you know, we're working on cars in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, because it's what they got, it's the only thing they have, so they keep it going, they don't worry about the depreciation of it or anything like that, that's what they have to drive. And that being said, you know, the only thing that I'm saying, you can keep the maintenance, the fleet policy or whatever the same, the only thing that I was saying, at this particular time, I don't think we need to spend $167,000 on vehicles. You know, if we were to have a disaster, or if sales were, you know, the economy was absolutely pathetic, we'd be sitting here discussing tonight what we could cut out of the budget. And this, I'm sure, would be one thing, but that's the only thing that I'm saying, is at this particular time, March 18th, 2013, I don't think we need to spend $167,000 on vehicles.
Oh, counsel, like, a couple of years ago, one of the things that got changed was we bumped up the miles to, from whatever it was, to 120,000. Is that an option that you wanna consider, of miles, bumping up the miles higher so that cars would last longer, Mr. Pond?
No, I, I mean, again, I, I understand all the reasoning, but obviously, we have to think about something that's gonna stand, you know, for the long term in terms of being able to annually go through this conversation in a, in a reasonable way, I think that's the important thing. And being able to make good decisions that both are, are present to the, to the timing of the decision related to our annual budget and the things that are going on, but also to the long-term viability of the fleet, which is, is not an annual thing, it's, it's actually, there's 300 vehicles in a fleet, so, I guess, I'm, I'm just saying that I feel like the policy could be improved, not necessarily by, by changing tho, those numbers around necessarily, but buying, but by being able to paint the, a picture, at least of, you know, again, with some additional metrics, to paint a picture that really shows, this is why we think we're, we're right, we're at the bottom part, and this is why we think it's the right cyclical time to, to change a vehicle out, and I think some of that is in here, but not, not as much as maybe is, is available to be able to then provide that slate and, and really be able to see it, and then make, and then make a decision. And the decision might be, this year we have to pass, but, but at least the metrics would really tell you that in your long-term cycle, this vehicle really has hit its low, its low point, everything else is, everything, everything after this is really a losing, a losing proposition, and then we have a heads-up, we can make a heads-up decision about it, and that, so that's all I'm saying, I just think there may be... And that, so that's all I'm saying, I, I just think there may be, and I, I might be completely oversimplifying it in, by saying that there might be additional ways to, to present the policy, to, to provide output, some numerical output that would help us at least look at what, what, you know, what you're looking at, and be able to, to, to identify that in fact, we, we're at that low point.
Well, I guess, I was going to ask Tim a question, is, when you decide to replace a vehicle, is there a, do you just pick one criteria, or is there a multiple criteria that would, I haven't read it, you know, I haven't read that. So, i, i, is that, is that criteria clearly displayed for Council, say it meets five out of the ten criteria, so we should sell it, we should get rid of it, is it, is it, is the criteria that we're using pretty clear for Council, for the public to see, that it meets seven out of ten criteria, so we should go? Or am I missing something?
I, I, I believe it does, and if I could have five minutes, and I'll try to keep it really short. We have a, a fleet replacement policy, which, if you read it, you know, it includes a whole lot of things. The two key triggers that bring things up, so that we can review them on any vehicle, is the age and the miles. So, they hit the age of the miles, and then it comes onto our radar screen as to whether or not we ought to take a look at replacing those vehicles. The information that has been used by a lot of other entities that have a lot larger fleets, has determined these sweet spots using replacement, fleet replacement programs. And for the most part, what you see in our fleet replacement guidelines, those aged, ages of units, is what we have found to be, in most all the other cities, they're all kind of in the same area, and, and the other governmental agencies, that that is pretty much the sweet spot, as to where you ought to get rid of the vehicle before you start putting more money into it, you can maximize the return on, on the sale of it, et cetera. And so, that's, even though we've tinkered with these a little bit, the, the, the history behind those is all based on math. We, in fact, took a look at purchasing, or coming to you and asking to purchase fleet management software, that comes up with all those criteria on each vehicle, and helps predict when you need to get rid of them. I and my fleet manager took a look at that, and, you know, after looking at the other list, the two million dollar list of the vehicles that are eligible to be reviewed, decided that most of our vehicles are beyond that point, and because of the financing of the city, it wouldn't do us any good, because we're past the sweet point on most every vehicle we own, except for the current police cars that we have out there. That said, I want to just point out that we do go through, and that's why, what I tried to do in the, in the memo, is once we have this, we look at, at this point, the worst of the worst, and we look at all of those, those different items, and if you look at the pickup, let's just look at the, the oh-seven pickup, you know, it's, it's got high miles, it isn't that old, the police service, this is a vehicle that the police chief certainly wants his undercover police officer to be able to get away from a situation if he needs to, and not have to worry about this vehicle going down. This vehicle has not been reliable the last two or three years. And if you take a look, and I'll pull that one up here real quick, but that vehicle, the pickup, if you looked at the graph, you know, it, it in fact spiked, you know, a couple of years ago. We've had to put a lot of money in that, and, and if we were, had been on top of our game, we would have replaced it a couple of years ago, before we plowed a bunch in. We're right now at a point where we need to put more money into it again, and so we've projected, if we keep it in the fleet, that's why there's a boost from twelve to thirteen, that if we keep it in the fleet, we anticipate having to spend that additional money to keep it there. So with that, the reliability's poor, the maintenance is normal, of course, we know what the value is. And then, we have this program, which is a manual program that we use, the one that a couple of you referred to, which takes a look at the different criteria that we, that we're using, to make that final determination. In each of the, all of the vehicles that we're recommending you replace this year, the only one that isn't past the sweet spot, but, you know, that all of them are way past the sweet, sweet spot, except for the, the oh-seven pickup, they're all, you know, are way past that. The other issue we really have is that reliability. We don't have, though it sometimes looks like it, a lot of extra vehicles out there, because they're in different departments, at different locations. If we don't have the tools for our employees to, to use, then we can't get the work done. So, a key, one of these vehicles that, that I pointed out in extra detail, is the asphalt patching machine. It's a one-of-a-kind machine, we're having more and more downtime. When it's down, we have to then reassign the crew, and that, that has a four-man crew, get them into other vehicles, get them, we lose a couple hours of productivity, and then we finally get the machine working if we can that day, or maybe it's two days later we get it working. That machine is in really poor shape, the, not the truck part, we put some money in the, in the actual cab and chassis, but the working part in the back is in poor shape, and we're estimating we need to put twenty-five thousand dollars into that unit if we're going to keep it. We can do that. And the other point I would make for, on that particular unit, is that it has a power takeoff that is, that operates the back end, and so it sits there and idles, and the transmission works all day. The ten thousand hours that's on that engine and transmission is equivalent to three hundred and thirty thousand travel miles. So that vehicle's got almost four hundred thousand miles, if you put it in miles. So there's one that, it's, you know, it's a one-of-a-kind truck, and we, we certainly want to keep it on the road. That's really all I wanted, just, just let you know that, and we, we certainly would love to have the program, we've, we've got it costed, I didn't bring that cost with me today, but we would love to be able to put that program in place, and punch it in, and it would give us this data that would tell us that we, you know, need to replace, you know, a million dollars worth of equipment possibly, and we know that isn't going to happen, and so we made the conscious decision not to spend the money on a computer program that wasn't going to give us any information that would be, you know, actually productive. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
By the way, I was being the devil's advocate, I was just pretending, that if we had to read this, could, could someone do it?
Yeah. And the only other thing that we would say is, i, if you want us to run these vehicles to a hundred and twenty thousand miles, or a hundred thousand miles, then set that as the criteria, because we, they're your vehicles. We can try to keep them running, it just means that we're going to have the issues we're talking about. Any, any vehicle, we can keep running, just when it breaks down, we have to fix it. So, if we know that, then we won't bring things to you for replacement. If, if you want to change your policy, change the policy, and we'll, we'll use that policy to bring in replacement requests for you.
When's that, that other piece of equipment coming to Council, the asphalt truck?
Well, I told Greg to stop preparing the, the specs on it, bec...
No, but they've, they've stopped the...
Just information.
They've stopped the preparation to bring it forward to Council.
Because I really wanted, you know, maybe tonight, or in the near future, tell us up or down, you know, we don't want to spend another twenty, thirty hours getting specifications and plans put together for this vehicle, and then bring it to Council, and have wasted that time that could have been used, you know, to, to a better source, when we're shorthanded to begin with.
Mr. Stites?
The patch truck, have you given any thought to hiring that out?
Sure, and, and we can hire, we can, we can offload any of that. The issue is that we can't, we can't, we can't get the work done as chief as we can in-house. And I can just tell you that, we take all of our big patches, and I load them into our overlay program every year. So we, we make sure that we are only doing the small patches throughout the city. And so, we are, I'm trying to find, again, the sweet spot in outsourcing. We can outsource the whole thing, and I guarantee that you'll pay double, because crew pricing on short, small, small work is very high. When we, when I can come in with a production crew, and they can knock out large patches when the crews here are doing the overlay, we can, we can make it very cost-effective. But to take care of the, the small patches, it just is not cost-effective, and unless you're going to outsource all of public works, and, you know, that's, that's another option, and some have tried that, and, you know, that, that's also an option.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll go back to, you know, what I said before, I understand the maintenance, I think the, the miles could be bumped up a little bit, but that's, you know, whatever. The only thing that I was saying at this time, I don't think we need to be spending a hundred and sixty-seven thousand on vehicles. Now, you can bring them back in, and Council can vote, yes, no, one, two, three, four, you know, whatever, but that was my main point, that, you know, I, it's like I said, you know, if things were going haywire, we'd be sitting here discussing what we could be cutting out. But that was my main contention, that at this particular time, I don't think we need to spend a hundred and sixty-seven thousand on vehicles.
So, Mr. Peranto has indicated that the only vehicle that hadn't reached the sweet spot was a two thousand seven?
No, it's reached the sweet spot, should have been replaced two years ago.
Which ones?
That's the, that's the pickup, that the...
That's the worst one.
No, that's the, the best of our, of these, is the one that's only two years over, maybe...
And then, does Council want staff to continue on the asphalt truck? Mr. Uh...
No, I wasn't going to speak to that, go ahead.
So, you have to make some decisions, or leave it as it?
Let me just, let me just ask one question. Your, your real contention is that it's costing us money on each one of these vehicles, that we're actually going backwards? Because we will get less back when we do unload them, and we will have spent more, so the differential between the return, that we're past the point where we got the maximum value of every one of these vehicles? Is that your contention?
Yes, yes.
So that the most efficient thing we could have done with the taxpayers' dollars, in your opinion, is replace these vehicles two years ago? I'm arbitrarily picking two years.
Well, we should have replaced all of these before now, yes.
And so, you would argue that, in fact, when we decide not to replace something in a timely fashion, that we're in fact, bad stewards of the pol, of the policy? If you don't want to answer that, because it's politically insensitive, I'll withdraw the question.
No, we, we under, no, we understand that, that, and then, as you saw in my memo, the cost of the new replacement vehicles is always a consideration. If you don't have the money, you don't have the money. We have not have the money to fully fund the fleet the way we should have, for probably five or six years. When the downturn in the economy occurred, we started keeping vehicles past those sweet spots, we started pushing those out. I don't believe it was a bad decision to push out the mileage, as suggested, you know, by Mike two years ago, because we were seeing that, in, in reality, that the vehicles were in, in better shape. Of course, we had pushback from the police department, because they felt they were unsafe if they had, you know, a hundred thousand miles on them. We're keeping the police vehicles on the road, and they seem to be in, be, be fine. We don't, we're seeing downtime, they have extra vehicles, so that one isn't as critical as some of the other locations. But we have now, this fleet has aged to the point that just about everything that we haven't replaced in the last couple of years, is now ten, fifteen years old, and, and we get to a certain point where we might as well keep them until they, we can't get anything from, from them by selling them. So we're past the sweet spot, so then we started looking, and that's why you see the graph I show. We start looking, that we don't want to spend more money replace, or maintaining a vehicle than it's worth. So we're using that as now the current criteria for vehicles that are past the sweet spot in vehicle management. And that's why you see those graphs, that's what we're doing with those graphs.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Goff, have we, have we budgeted in the budget for two thousand thirteen for these vehicle replacements?
Yes.
And what dollar value did we budget in the...
Um, good question, do you have it?
Or give me a range, I mean, did, did we budget a hundred and sixty-seven, three sixty-one?
No, I think those are higher than that. Tim's got three eighty-five. Does that include the patch truck, though? Yes.
The big hunk, I'm sorry.
The big hunk of what's left was the truck, right?
It's the only thing so.
So, if you take the truck out of it, what was the budget for these eight or ten vehicles? I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to get at. Is the one fifty-three above or below the budget?
It's below the budget, it's right, it's really close to the budget. It's right at budget.
Mr. Starker?
Well, I don't know, I listened to this conversation, and, and, you know, we have, we have a group of, of employees who, who work hard for this city, I believe, and we, we need to provide the tools that they need to work with. When I listened to the discussion, I don't know really when the, the sweet spot, you know, the sweet spot for me in a vehicle is when you turn it on and it drives for you, and, and, and you're not driving to the repair shop with it. A lot of the discussion that we're having, I think, is really a management discussion. You know, to me, I think we need to look at this as an overall budget, an allocation of resources to the city, to the manager, and this, and the people that, that manage the day-to-day detail operations in this. I think from a, from really a public, you know, safeguarding the interests of the public, I think we need to do that in the budget process, and I think we need to leave the details about how we replace the vehicles with the, with the staff, and the city management, and the city administration, and get out of the weeds, and let these people do their job. And, and I think, and I hear Mr. Stites saying, that we, if, if we've got a budget problem, we need to deal with it in the budget process. And, and I don't know that, that it's really effective for Council to try to sit and look at the, the sweet spots on it, on an oh-seven Ford F-150. And I suppose when you look at the, the other question I had, is we're going to spend a hundred and sixty-seven, does that, has that been decreased by the, by the value that we would get out of the vehicles, or is there some, we've got about twenty thousand dollars worth of excess value, or value left in them, would we recover that, and therefore reduce that expenditure?
The answer is yes, but we're not allowed to budget that way, so that money comes back to the general fund as miscellaneous revenue. So all of these vehicles will go to, to auction for sale.
Thank you.
Just as a trivia thing, when these vehicles do go to auction, someone will buy them and drive them.
So, does Council want this to come back as a regular agenda item, as-is? And then the other question is, is do you want staff to continue working on the asphalt truck estimates, and information to bring back, too? Because right now, it's been put on hold, according to Mr. Peranto.
Mike, thank you. We already approved this through the budget process, and I know that we go through this every year, but we, it was part of the budget process, we discussed it, we said that we need to do it, and, and all the time that I've been on Council, we, we've, we've, we don't take care of our vehicles, and, and we don't want to leave our employees out on the street. As cars will tend to break down, not where it's convenient, like anywhere near you want, want it to be. I think that since we approved it on the budget, we should just move it forward and vote on it, because this is really just approving the money to spend, that we already said we would give them to spend.
So are you making that as a consensus?
As a consensus.
So the first consensus is to, and you can discuss it, is to move forward with the...
Bring this back to Council.
Bring this back to Council, as-is, for these ten vehicles, or whatever it is. Anybody have a problem with that, coming back to Council, as-is? Mr. Stites is the only one that thinks that has a problem with that?
Does that include the patch truck?
Well, the second, it's the second.
Now, now, the patch truck is a, is a question to bring up. Who wants to bring that back or not?
Well, I think we ought to, I think we ought to bring that back, that's, that's a function of, of our city, and, and patching our streets, and, and I think Mr. Peranto is right, that we, we, we can ill afford to, to let that work under contract, under... under, under piecework contract. And I think, uh, if we've got, if we've got personnel that know how to go and do that, we need to provide them with the tools and I think we should at least find out what it's gonna cost us to get the truck operational.
So is that a consensus to move forward with the patch truck? Yeah, anybody oppose that? Mr. Stites is the only one that oppose? Okay, so Tim, the direction is go ahead and bring back the vehicles as is and then keep moving forward on the patch truck. On the patch truck, does it have to come back to a study session? Do you wanna go to the dais? Cause that was gonna be a, a study session agenda item, wasn't it?
No.
It was, okay, so just come to the dais with the, okay. Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Would you like to move to the undergrounding since Tim's here?
Right, that'd be good.
Okay.
Tim's here and Mr. Doll's here.
Yeah.
Wanna come on up, Mr. Doll? So as you know, we've had some discussion about undergrounding on Kipling, about trail, and then there's also Thirty Second Field and then there's a policy in general which we, the beneficial policy has been when you have a major project undergrounding, if the money's available. So to get some better moving parts. And then, um, Davis, do you mind that if Mr. Doll gives us the upgrade, update on... So the first part of this discussion on undergrounding, Mr. Doll's gonna discuss Thirty Second and
I don't, but that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. As council knows, we have a, have a street widening project under, ongoing on Thirty Second and, and Youngfield and, um, the, the, there are, there were XL power lines above ground along that stretch and as a result of the, the widening project, those needed to be moved. Under our franchise that we have with XL whereby they're allowed to have their power poles in the city right-of-way, they are required to move their lines at their expense when necessary because of a quote, "public project." And a public project is like a street widening and it's something that the city actually, actually triggers. XL argues about the definition of public project in other contexts, trying to make it as narrow as possible so that their relocation obligation at their expense is as small as possible. But this is not the kind of project they can make any of those arguments on. It's clearly a public project and they knew they had to move the lines at their expense. Uh, however, there's another provision in the franchise that provides for a one percent undergrounding fund. They keep, they set aside one percent of the gross revenues obtained from, uh, customers in the city for a fund, uh, that is available to the city to request that above-ground lines be undergrounded, separate apart from some public project. You know, we just want, for example, to move lines that we think are unattractive or unsafe for whatever reason from above-ground to, to underground. Uh, what XL has done on the Thirty Second Avenue project and it's really their attitude statewide, I can tell you because I represent other cities and other franchise negotiations with XL, is that, um, in their judgment on the Thirty-Eighth, on the Thirty Second Avenue project, there was no good place to relocate the lines above ground, so they needed to relocate them below ground. City did not ask for them to relocate them below ground. City just said, "Move the lines. We've got a project." They decided, first they tried to engineer it above ground and actually had a design that, that I believe would've worked and Tim can address that if you like, but they made the decision to go underground and they made the unilateral decision that the incremental cost to go underground and the lion's share of the cost is always undergrounding lines. It's cheap to move poles. It's expensive to, to dig trenches and put in conduit and, and the lion's share of the, the cost of the project. So they undergrounded the lines. That was fine. City didn't object to that. Took them a while to design the, the, the design for that and slowed our project down, but they finally got that done. But unilaterally without requesting, uh, without advising the city, they went ahead and charged that incremental cost underground to the undergrounding fund, this one percent fund, that in my opinion is available, but not for their use at their sole discretion, but we have to ask, we have to request. We'd like to see the following lines between point A and point B put underground just because it's a good idea. And that fund, as you may know and we can get into later, allows the city to borrow ahead, uh, against what it expects that one percent will generate in, in the next three years. And XL frankly is very good about that statewide and will allow you to borrow ahead because they got a pretty well-understood rate base and, uh, pretty well-understood, uh, revenue stream and they can predict quite well unless, unless they're going to the PUC for an increase. They can predict really quite well what they're gonna receive and they're pretty good about allowing you to borrow ahead. But in any event, they charged that unilaterally and we wrote them a letter saying, "We don't recall asking you to, to underground these lines. We're fine with your doing it, but we did not request you to underground them and therefore you may not charge the fund." They've come back and said, "No, if the results of the underground, of the relocation is that it, the only place to go is underground, then the charging of the fund's automatic and you don't have a say." And I, I believe that's wrong under the franchise. So we're in disagreement about that. Uh, we've had correspondence back and forth with, uh, XL and, um, there's a potential resolution just to the Thirty Second Avenue dispute, which would be, "All right, you can charge fifty percent of that incremental cost to the undergrounding fund and we don't wanna object, but both parties reserve their right to their arguments about this downstream." Uh, I believe that at some point, somebody in the state, whether it's WeRge or someone else, will probably have to litigate this with XL because when you think about it from where they sit, it's really worth it to push this argument because if you succeed, you end up moving a lot of revenue, uh, over, over from one balance sheet to another and saving yourself a lot of cost where there are these public projects which otherwise you would have to pay for. And I'm certain that that's, I mean, to be very blunt, it sounds, um, politically insensitive, but to be very blunt, I'm, I think that that's exactly what's going on. They're starting with the outcome they'd like and then fashioning their, their view of the franchise to fit that, uh, outcome. So on this particular project, I think it's probably worthwhile to kick the can down the road on the larger question of what happens next time and the time after that and the time after that. At fifty percent, the numbers aren't too bad and Patrick and, and Tim can address that. And let's remember, that's money not coming out of a general fund. It is in fact coming out of this undergrounding fund that I know we've got other plans for elsewhere, but that illustrates, in my opinion, why it will be important to draw the line on XL at some point because if they continue to raid the R, what I call R, but the one percent fund for projects which they would otherwise be responsible to, to pay a hundred percent, that takes away from the city's flexibility and options in using that fund for what I believe it's there for, which is at the behest of the city on projects that, that, uh, the city has decided are a priority to put underground. That's kind of the current dynamics. Patrick and the, the, um, his opposite number at XL have been exchanging correspondence and we're likely to, I won't say likely, but I think we may be able to, to reach the sort of fifty percent solution just on this project. And I realize that defers the battle, but it's possible others might fight that battle and, and get it done in our absence. If not, then it may well be, I'll be back in front of you at some point saying, "Okay, we're here again." Only this time, I think it's time to get a declaratory judgment from the district court if XL's unwilling to, cause we've got seventeen, sixteen or seventeen more years to run on our franchise, during which time we're gonna have other public projects that are gonna mean XL's gotta move its lines in cases in which XL's gonna be incentivized to move its lines underground and charge our one percent fund. So this issue isn't, you know, will not go away. It will come up again.
Mr. Goff, do you wanna talk about the money?
Uh, yeah, the, the fifty percent, the total project cost was, um, about three hundred and fifty, I believe, thousand, the incremental cost to underground it. So, um, I negotiated with XL that in this case, as Mr. Doll said, we'll, we'll pay fifty percent just because of the confusion. It was a, it was a long project and difficult project, grant-funded project and we got through it. They accepted that, but their response back to that was, "However, from moving forward, it's our interpretation of the franchise for all future projects." And that's when we pulled back and said, "No, we don't agree with that." Um, I did speak with Preston Gibson from XL this weekend and, uh, I, I let him know we were gonna have this discussion tonight and he kinda backed off a little bit and said, "Okay, well, let's, let's agree to the fifty percent now and, and we'll discuss the, the franchise, um, uh, disagreement later." So that's kinda where we're at. So, well, the fifty percent will be about a hundred and seventy thousand for the city.
From the franchise?
From the franchise one percent fund.
Go ahead, cause you, you put it on the agenda, so go ahead.
Um, Mr. Doll is, uh, what's the, what do, would it take, what would the cost of getting to trial be for us?
Well, I, I've been talking with the litigator at our firm about just that. If we could restrict it to a declaratory judgment action where both sides filed motions for summary judgment, you know, so we didn't have a trial and the expense of trial and witnesses, et cetera, really guessing twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars for us to litigate that position.
Mr. Goff, do we think that we could convince any, uh, allied cities to participate in this discussion with us?
Interesting outside. I, I had lunch with, uh, Jefferson County city managers last week and I brought this issue up and they're all like, "Yeah, go for it." And said, "We'll, we'll put our names on that." So, you know, they, they didn't, didn't write, didn't give me anything in, with the signature on it, but I could definitely go back to them and ask if this is something they wanna join. You know, I mean, they, they seemed, e- e- every city's dealing with, with these types of issues. Both Mr. Doll and I did, did a listserv, um, question out to the city attorneys and city managers across the state and, and didn't get a ton of response back, but we did get a response from Ken Philman, who, um, former mayor of Barbata, who's, who's an attorney and deals with utility issues and he thinks there's definitely a case here and thinks it should be fought.
I'm all about fighting. That's just me. It'd be almost as much fun as fighting the waterboard, but...
And we are trying to balance also our relationship with XL, um, which Tim and Doll are probably ready to pull my hair out for that, but, you know, we are trying to work with them on other issues such as the banners and, and so we're, we're trying to move forward with a balance here so that we don't, you know, we keep our relationship with them. But, you know, at some point, um, you know, we can't just sit back and be taken advantage of you either, so.
Ms. Linguine?
What are the likelihoods that us accepting it this time now would impact any future litigation?
Appreciate you asking that. We have, XL has a, um, pretty good habit actually of, uh, agreeing to, when it does a special deal, of, of making clear that neither party can use that outcome of that deal against the other next time around. And that's good for them as well as for us. They, they don't do it out of a excess of, of concern for us. You know, they're protecting themselves, but that's a door, that's a route I've gone down with them a couple of times actually and they're, they're a little congressional about kicking the can down the road, you know, so. And so they will do that and I, I would not let the city sign off on this fifty percent deal without exactly that protection.
Council, do you wanna go fight? Do you wanna wait?
I'm all about fighting.
Mr. Pond, Mr. Starker?
Mr. Doll, you're, the, the agreement that we would be litigating, I guess, if that's, if, if we, if we went that, that, th- these are their documents? This is the franchise agreement that we have with them?
Yes. It's, it's our franchise, which we negotiated with them and it's a contract, even though it's a franchise, it's really a contract between parties that we both contributed language to. I will say that it's pretty much their template that we made some changes to.
How do you, how do you sort of in, from an objective point of view, what do you, how do you think the facts, A is, are the facts in this case good facts from our side of the table? Uh, and if we were to effectively argue good facts on our side, do you think we would stand a, a, a high degree of prevailing in the arguments in the end of the day?
I think our case is better than theirs. I, I do. You know, fair reading of the franchise doesn't let you read into this, into this idea that, that they can jump from the undergrounding part of the, or the, the move your stuff because of our public project part of the franchise over to charging the one percent fund, which says at the request of the city. That's the gateway language to get into the one percent is at the request of the city. City made no such request. Uh, they, you know, they have their arguments to make that there are tariffs and they always bring in kind of outside stuff. Uh, I can't guarantee with a high degree of success in arena which has never been tested. I'll tell you that. But I take some comfort from the fact that, uh, on the contract language itself, this gateway language at the request of the city, I think is important. Uh, I think that the move your lines at your cost language is important and I take some comfort from Ken Philman's experience in the arena who's, and I laid out our arguments for him and he said, "Yes, he, he, he agrees."
Do you think we would be able to recover our attorney's fees and, and costs?
No, no, I, I...
So it's on our nickel?
Th- that's right. I mean, a, a good outcome for the city would be winning the case, but the court is not gonna say their position is frivolous.
Uh, Mr., Mr., do we, I guess at some point, we're drifting into discussing litigation. I don't, I don't know when that, we crossed some line here about wanting to be an executive session, but I would also ask whether we, I mean, it would seem to me that if the cities, even the moral support from the rest of the cities would be something that was very broad that the, um, would be unpleasant for an XL politically and if...
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's pretty much what happened with the, the banner policy. I mean, every city went after him and it, it, it convinced them to, to work with us on that issue, so, um, you know, this could be another issue.
Mr. Doll, since their, the way you've discussed the, the outcome of the fifty percent versus a hundred percent would be a separate issue to then come back and say, "We want to, we feel as though, um, we wanna push this further, go into litigation and go for the hundred percent, cause we don't feel that that was right." Is that therefore not gonna affect the hundred, the fifty percent?
If I'm understanding the question right, if we, if we, if we do a deal with them on the Thirty Second Avenue widening project at fifty percent, uh, both parties will preserve their rights to argue about, well, what happens next time?
So the next time would be the...
The next, and, and the next time, you know, you...
So we would retain the, the...
Yeah, you'd retain the right to, you, we, you retain the right to make that argument next time or do a deal next time, you know, if, if you wanted or if we, we'd gotten enough support and the next time numbers, to some extent, it might be driven by numbers. You know, the next time, the impact of, of charging the incremental cost to our fund might be a million dollars, for example, and it's, that's something that, that's probably something you'd spend twenty-five thousand saying, litigating, that would be a good investment. But no, we can, uh, if we do this deal now, that preserves our ability to make the hundred percent argument later.
You can't come back and get the other fifty percent later?
No, I mean, once you've done that deal, if, I'm sorry, if that was your question. Yeah, once you've done that deal, you don't go backwards.
Don't go back to the other one.
Yeah.
The, the work's done?
Yeah, otherwise it'd be no incentive to either party to settle for that.
Does that take the fun out for you?
I think we should stand up. I think if work's done, I think we should stand up to them. I don't thi, I think it's bullshit and that, excuse me, that we should not allow them to just charge us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something they should've done themselves and if we don't stop, now, I mean, it's, and I think we have a lot of friends.
Maybe the work is done?
Did they get all those other lines down finally? Because I thought, you know, we talked about this because I work right, I, I thought they had some of the lines, some of the poles still up. Did they get those? I thought they still saw them.
Another one here, franchisees. Quest has, uh, promised...
Okay, it's Quest.
It's Quest, it still has something up there and they've been promising a date since the first part of January and it's, they still aren't down.
I was just curious, cause I know I see the poles still and, and I wasn't sure where that was from.
It was XL's poles and, and the various other franchise, you know, other, so the people string lines on them. Quest is ta, or XL's taking its lines off of those pole.
Mr. Starker?
But Mr. Doll, you think that the, the facts in this particular case, you think would augur well for the city and the facts in some other case in the future may or may not augur well?
No, I don't, it's not driven by the facts, it's driven exclusively by what the language of the franchise says.
For everything in the...
For, because the, we'd be arguing not so much about the, the facts here. It's pretty well admitted, this is a public project that triggers their obligation to relocate, uh, because street widening, classic public project. So the emphasis then, and the whole focus shifts to, well, what does the franchise say about the obligation to relocate underground for public projects? They've got their argument, we've got ours and there's a, their argument, the heart of their argument is that the franchise also says that, um, the... that, um, the, uh, under, uh, above-ground line shall be relocated above-ground, underground line shall be located underground unless the city, or, excuse, excuse me, underground, above-ground line shall be above-ground unless the city specifically requests undergrounding, which we did not do. But they, what they've done is their construct, and, you know, I guess it's our fault, their construct is, "Look, if there's really no other place, and you're telling us we have to move, then really, in, in real point of fact, actually kind of, y- you know, as an artifice, you're actually asking us to put them underground, because that's the only place we can, so therefore, we're gonna, we're going to, to characterize your request as an undergrounding request, because gee, there was no other place to put it, so we're gonna kind of reinterpret what you've asked and call it a request underground."
Yeah, but you understand that if they would have just did above-ground, this wouldn't be an issue right now? Yeah, 'cause...
Yeah, yes, but the question is, there was a plausible scheme, a plausible design, to install them above, above-ground.
Tim, can I address that?
Yes, and when we started all of this, it was back when we had the Cabela project going, and we were buying right-of-way for the widening of Thirty Second, and we sat down with the Excel design engineer, and we said, "How much space do you need to put these lines, these poles over?" And the guy told us two feet. And so we acquired two extra feet of right-of-way beyond what we needed along Thirty Second, so the, the pole line could be placed there. When it got time to actually design the move, that guy retired. Somebody else stepped in and said, "That isn't enough room," and we had absolutely no time for us to go buy more right-of-way, and they didn't have time to go out and negotiate easements in order to maintain the grant and not lose the grant.
And let's remember, they always have the ability to negotiate easements, y- you know, so the "gee, there's no place to put it" uh, isn't really true. There's always room if you want to go buy the room, but, you know, for various reasons, they didn't want to do that, and they saw the undergrounding fund, and I think knew even then that they were going to charge it to that. So that's...
So the two feet that they required was for poles above-ground?
So, as Tim mentioned, this was that, that grant-funded project, so we, we were nervous we were going to potentially lose the money, so we, we agreed with Excel, just that we'll figure out the funding later. They told us months ago that they were going to charge us to our one percent fund, but we didn't want to argue about it, because we didn't want to lose the grants, so, um, so they went ahead and did the work, and now we're still arguing.
I'd like to make a consensus that we direct staff to tell Excel that we don't intend to fund the underground powering at Thirty Second and Youngfield.
Is there consensus to not fund, to tell Excel that we're not going to fund, using our one percent money or any other money, to fund the undergrounding at Thirty Second and Youngfield because of the franchise agreement? All in favor of that consensus? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Not even the fifty percent that we negotiated. You want to go back on that?
We'll carry the message. Thanks.
So, partly because that came up in the thought process that we weren't in complete control of this fund, and in some additional information that I got as to the costing and some dialogue, the idea that we didn't really have a policy on how to spend those funds ourselves came back up, and Mr. Starker asked me, and I agreed with him to put it on the agenda, just to revisit whether we had, should have a specific policy, on how do you, what, what are our priorities for using those funds when we do that, and what the consequences of that are, in, in sort of a general, is there a policy? And I wanted to have that discussion. I thought, if, depending on how the discussion went, there might be a desire to re-discuss, uh, the two-week-old decision to, to use significant amount of our resources on the, the three blocks on, on Kipling. I don't know how to start the dialogue beyond, beyond that. I mean, what are our priorities is really the first question. What do we think the best way, so we don't have to make these decisions, when there's only one thing in front of us? I'd like to say, is say, you know, we, what are our priorities for working on this issue?
Ms. Davis?
What I would like to do, I actually, I saw this in the email, but I hadn't read it, um, yet, and I know we have it right here. It wasn't in our packets, but I would almost like the opportunity to look at some of these examples from what other cities are doing to give me a better point of view as far as what, where I would like our policy to be, because I do think it needs to be some type of, I know they have like flow diagrams and if-this, then-that type of situation, so, um, I would like the opportunity to review some of this. I don't know if everyone else really had the opportunity to look at it or not, but I do think it's something that needs to be discussed and prioritized. But would like to do a little bit more homework.
I think I, I feel the same way. I think it's a worthwhile conversation, and I'd be willing to, to talk about it, but I guess more to the point for you would be, wh- what's, what's the, what's the request and how it interfaces with, with the decisions that, that have been made? I mean, if, because if there is a specific request to either suspend that decision, reverse that decision, or do something else, then, then obviously, it's a little bit more, uh, complicated.
You know, from, from my standpoint, I don't feel that, uh, having been on the losing side, I, of the, of the, of the four-three vote the last time, I kind of feel like I'm not the one that, I would have never, so, I didn't support the last decision, so it doesn't feel completely fair for me to stand up here and make that the central point. I, I believe we need to discuss a policy, but someone else, I'm not going to be the one to bring forward, you know, it's self-serving for me to bring forward the argument I did the last time, so, I thought there might be others who, who thought that in light of the, how little we can control this at times, but I, you know, I'm not going to make the ask, I guess is the point. I would, but everybody already knew how I felt before, so.
Can I give you some input, too? Because you know, I talked today, I talked to Excel today, and I found out a couple of things. I said, you know, "Why is this costing one point two million versus eight hundred, six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand at Discovery Park?" And what I was told is that, um, because of the consensus to move forward, Excel will go out for three bids, and we talked about that, that Excel, and it's free to the city, there's no charge for the city to go out to bid, but what they're seeing is, of course, the increase in aluminum and copper for a lot of the expense. But what they also said was, is if the city wants to have a bid process for any of these projects, they're at no charge, and you could always have that available. So if you want to do Forty Fourth and Kendall, or if you want to do, uh, whatever, that would be the time you could actually ask Excel for these locations for a bid, and they, they get three bids, there's no charge to the city, and then you have an idea of what the costs are. They said the one point two million is probably pretty close because of increased costs in copper and aluminum. And then the one thing I mentioned to Davis today, the reason why I was so supportive of Thirty Second and Thirty Fifth and Kipling was, if we do that project, there's one less foot of condemnation you have to perform on those residential properties, because they can underground it. So they're not taking an extra foot for a new pole. But if you wanted to get to other places, all they need is direction from the city staff saying, "Give us some bids for other locations," and then the policy, of course, would be your, your policy.
I just, I just have a quick question, because this, this discussion came up on, on a night that I wasn't able to attend, but I'm dra- on my way here driving, I'm looking at those, and, and I see where it could end up being pricey, because you have a lot of power lines coming in right there at Thirty Second and Kipling. My, my, I guess my question, not necessarily to revisit, just a question. When you're, when they do underground it right there at Thirty Second and Kipling, what are they going to do with the power lines that run down Thirty Second? Because the, the pole right there goes away.
No, that pole stays. You know, what they do is they bring everything to a pole at Thirty Second and Kipling, and then they'll, they'll, all of the, the overhead comes to that location, and then they'll just go down that pole and then go, go north towards Thirty Fifth Underground.
So even though we're undergrounding, the biggest, ugliest spot of it will still stay?
The whole thing is going to be, they'll save property, though.
Well, I'm just, no, I'm just asking, because, I mean, honestly, I drive that one and I drive around town, but, so really, everything from thirty, from that pole north goes under, but that pole stays, and then the transition over along Thir-
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And you can ask them to, one pole to, to the...
No, they'd have, well, they'd have to underground e- e- north, south, east, and west, so.
That's why I had to ask, because when I looked at it, I didn't see any other way for that to be underground, that one pole.
So the question is, I guess there's a couple, I'd like to defer the policy discussion, so they can read the packet of material.
I guess I would say this, if, I, I believe, believe that it's unlikely that if we had had a policy in place, that this would have been the priority. That, that's my personal guess, because, we get so much more bang for the buck in other locations, whether they're residential, whether they can support other activities, that I'm, my guess would be there, that we wouldn't have chosen this to use five or six years of our, or fi- I guess, four to five years of our, of our resources on this one program.
Mr. Stages?
Yeah, I think that's kind of presumptuous, um, very presumptuous, because this is a District Three project. It all interrelates around that park. Uh, it's an entrance to the city. Uh, it's been dangerous up there for years. You know, I, it's tickling, i- it's fantastic that we're finally getting a sidewalk on Kipling that we have never had in a hundred years. And, uh, but this, uh, you know, up there, it's going to improve the aesthetics, it's going to, we will take less property from five homes, seven homes, or whatever up there. So I think it's a, a good project regardless of whether we would have had a policy or not, but I do think that's presumptuous to say that we wouldn't have done this, you know?
Mr. Pronto?
I ju- I just want to, uh, inform you that, based on the decision made a week ago, or whatever that was, I guess it was a week ago, we have, two weeks ago? Yeah, we've notified Excel, and of course, they're now in the process of designing that underground and getting the bids and all of that. Secondly, we have notified the right-of-way folks, our consultants, and, and reducing the right-of-way take as we move forward, and we're all now back under, you know, a timeline to get this under contract by the first of October, so that's the reason we pressed for the answer when we, when we did.
Yes, one more, sorry, I have just one more quick question. Okay. When we, so when we come back with this discussion on policy, is there a way to, because you, we, I, the utility underground project candidates, obviously, the pricing is not accurate. I mean, if we, if we're looking at the, the Thirty Second and Thirty Fifth, it, I mean, the max cost was six, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, but now that cost is doubled. I don't see the price of copper or aluminum going down. I mean, I, I mean, we might be up at a point where this is now our new norm. Is that...
Davis asked if we had any kind of list that we'd used in the past. I had that readily...
Oh, okay, but that's what...
So it isn't something that we believe is accurate today?
Is there a way to make a more accurate list by the time we have the discussion again?
And this was, this is a couple of years old, and we, we brought it to council when a decision was made, I believe, on the Pierce undergrounding, is my recollection. And so it's, it's old, and it's not your priorities today.
No, but I, I guess I'd like to see something that is more accurate. I mean, because when we're, we're going to be having this discussion and, and deciding where our priorities are, I think cost is going to play as important a role as location, so it'd be good to know what actual costs are, not look at something that is, is off substantially.
And, and I'd ask that if you gave us locations, then we would get you prices.
Well, and see, Excel said they'll do bidding for you for, for us, for the city, for at no charge. So if you have some locations, you know, for the future, you could actually ask them to do bidding on. They get you three bids at no charge.
So we almost have to have the discussion first about priorities and then find out price. Okay.
Then I would make a consensus to bring this back at a later date.
Can I, can I say something, um, having been on the prevailing side? I, I do, I am not as comfortable with the decision we made, and I'm not as comfortable, because after discussing with Patrick what it means, what we've done as far as using tho- those funds, uh, on a, on an area of three blocks, it's very expensive to do, and offsetting that to the fact that if we use it on a commercial area, you may have those funds as bargaining money when a developer comes in and says, you know, "We want tax increments," or "We want some of your sales tax," or, or whatever. By having those funds available to say, "We can offer you underground, um, lines," that could help us a great deal more than where we're putting it now. Tim, you were saying, or Mr. Prano, you're, you're saying that it's a little too late to go down that path, or where are we?
It's probably not too late tonight, but, you know, we can't put this off anymore, because I can't unwind some of the decisions that we've already made, and, you know, we, we can, but we may jeopardize the grant, so if this were not, if, if we're not made almost immediately, we wouldn't be able to probably maintain schedule.
Well, I'd like to, to get some feeling from, um, the others here as to whether we're all comfortable with the decision that's been made.
Mr. Pond?
Well, I, I'm sensitive to both sides of it. I totally understand the, the policy piece, and I think it's important for us to do it, and I, you know, presumptuous or not, I, I get your point. A- as for the, as for the project, though, I, I mean, I think there was, there was good reasons for, for, um, the decision that was made, and, and I, I certainly support the reasoning a- at the time. I do believe, and I, I, I suppose I may not get anyone to confirm this, I may have to go back and look at the tape, but I do believe that we, that we had discussed that night, that we were gonna, we were making a decision to move forward, and that we were certainly going to get a, some mon- an idea of what the bill was going to be, right? That we were gonna, obviously, that this, this meant that we were getting a price for this.
They're doing bids now, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, obviously, to some extent, it means that we're, that we're in a position to, you, you know, to, to see where this really ends up. I mean...
I would expect that, um, because of the discussions that we've had and the issues we've had with Excel, that they were very careful to use a nice, safe, high estimate for this project, so, if anything, maybe it'll be a little less. I don't expect it to be any higher.
Right, well, I mean, but that's kind of what I'm saying. I mean, obviously, if it's less, whether that's significant or not, that it, it, uh, it's an important metric for, for us in a, in a, in a priority discussion of the place. That's kind of my point. So, I, I mean, I don't know what it means to us when that number's coming back, and what decisions can be made, you know, based on, based on that number, but, uh, I, I, I do recall that when we talked about it, it was, it was, it was a decision to step forward, and certainly that what we were going to get back was a number, and we were going to know what position we were in.
But also, I think by the time we receive that number, it's, it's, it's going to be...
It's a done deal? All right, all right, well, that's, that's...
It's going to be right-of-way acquisition, negotiations done, and, and the potential grant schedule that we could lose the grant funds.
I mean, Joyce, I think it was a wise decision that you, that council made, because you're taking less property from the residents. You're cleaning up a pedestrian bike path that's going to be, could be dangerous with having those poles there. The commercial side, like I was talking to Patrick and others, the commercial side can be, you can negotiate S- Step and Tac-Tiff and everything for undergrounding, other ways besides the franchise fee, but these residences, if this, if it's not done on this section now, it's never going to get done, and, I don't think. And we've done probably three-fourths of Kipling already. You know, you've done the park, you've done, you've done south of Forty, north, north of Forty Fourth. You know, we did, we did a vacant piece of land down there with, and have lights, so I, I think it's a wise decision. The neighbors came in and supported it, you know, and, and, uh, that night, so, um, Ms. Davis?
Wasn't it also my recollection that they were having functional problems with it, above-ground? Weren't they having a lot of outages and...
Well, every time a storm hits...
Yeah, that those, those go down, and so there's problems there, too. I think it goes back to, kind of like the...
Those poles serve as everybody east of there. The school, the high school gets power from that, and the hat, the residences, so. Mr. Starker?
You know, when I, when I went and walked it, um, we're really talking about eight poles, I think, that are going to go away. Now, Jerry, to your point, um, I don't think it's a public safety issue, because those... Now, Jerry, to your point, um, I don't think it's a public safety issue, because those poles are gonna be located on the east side, east of the, east of the trail, so they won't be in the trail. So, I don't think that that's really an issue, uh, from a, you know, from a pedestrian or a bicycle pathway. One point two million divided by eight poles is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a pole. We currently have less than six hundred thousand in the account, I think that's right, isn't it? So, we'll go and we'll borrow against future revenues, um, probably two or three years with the future revenues. Driving over there, there's, uh, I drove down Thirty-second, there's lines all the way from Sheridan to Wadsworth, there's, um, there's poles and lines going south, along Kipling from there. There's poles in the backyards of each of those houses, because they feed off of these poles right next to these poles, uh, whether they underground them or not, it's gonna be, they're gonna come out of power to another pole that's gonna feed these houses electricity. I think the eight homeowners that are there would have a benefit. I'm not sure how that benefits the other people of Wheat Ridge. Whether we like it or not, Wheat Ridge is a community of poles and power lines above grade. There are very few areas that we have been fortunate enough to underground electrical lines. And I, you know, I certainly would like to have them in my neighborhood, I think, I, I, it's more desirable. But I think not in my lifetime, or my children's lifetime, will we ever underground lines to a significant degree. I just look at it as spending this kind of money, um, to, to benefit what looks like a, a few homeowners, and I know that they would like to have it done, and I, I feel for them, but I, I tell ya, I, I'm not sure that's the best expenditure of our funds.
Well, but I, with your points, I understand your point, but it actually services the entire eastern area, those poles, because they're major poles, they feed all the residents and the high school east of there, and so every time we've had a storm, or a, a car hits one of those poles and knocks it down, there's a power outage over there. And so, I understand, I agree that that Thirty-second Avenue should've been done when we reconstructed, I tried to get the, the f- undergrounding for Thirty-second Avenue between Sheridan and Pierce, but we couldn't get the funding because council didn't approve it. And that would've been the time to do it, because we were doing a project, curb gutter and sidewalk, so, um-
Well, I think, you know, pushing those poles further to the east, so that they're ten feet from the curb line, that'll certainly, should help to mitigate some of that, uh, if, if cars are hitting those poles.
Well, that's why I thought that, and then we're not condemning as much private property by getting rid of the poles, so that was just my, my concern on it.
Mr. Mayor? I just, I just wanted to add, uh, my husband and I live on Thirty-Fifth, almost Estes, and we have had our power go out because of down poles on Kipling. So, it isn't just eight people, or the little neighborhood by the high school, this potentially can affect a very large number of Excel customers. So, I just wanted to throw that in.
So, I guess at a minimum, it looks like council wants to discuss the policy later day, agenda whenever you can, or?
I, I can certainly, I'll certainly, I can certainly do that, um. I guess there will be no pressing need, but I'll fit it in down, well, down the road, because unless, well, the win, I suppose, is a direct function of whether we decide to defer or not, because, so, uh, but yes, I'll get, I will find a time to get it put on the agenda.
But can we ask if there is a consensus to-
Somebody needs to make a consensus, and I-
All right, my consens- um, I'm asking, or I move that we, um, relook at the decision we've just made, or that we made previously, and, um, see if that's still, since we don't have a policy, and we would have to do this very quickly, um, to see if, if we do wanna change that decision, or at least look at that, make that decision again.
No, I think that is wrong, because-
I'm just asking-
We made that decision so they could make a decision, and they've already started the land acquisition and everything else out there. So, now we're telling them no, and, and, you know, they all, already notified the bunch that's getting the, uh, acquisitions together, that will need a foot or two feet less, because we made that decision, and then we're gonna jeopardize, we could possibly jeopardize the three point five million dollar grant, the whole thing.
I think he's not gonna vote for that.
So, so, I, is the consensus then to reverse the decision from two weeks ago to move forward with the under, is that, is that what you're asking? So, are we gonna take s-
I mean, the, the, to, to re-debate it or re-discuss it, not to reverse it, right, we're not gonna reverse it in a study session, it's, it's, it's to-
But, I think we have to do one or the other tonight, don't we?
I don't know.
You have to, I mean-
We either, we either have to reverse or not tonight, is my understanding of the timeline, is that the staff? Wouldn't have to be tonight, but I mean, you need to do it within the next week or two, and we might still be able to keep things on track.
It was the two twenty-five council meeting, it was two weeks old.
Okay, I'm looking.
My, my, my point is if it, i- i- if the consensus is to re-debate it, then, then, then obviously, then it can go to a, a council meeting where there can be the public input on the agenda. You know, otherwise, what we've done is obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna have a vote where, you know, people haven't been able to come, step forward and, and, and join, join that debate. If there's no time, there's no time. If there is, there, then I, I would prefer, obviously, that the, that the consensus be more to the point of, we wanna bring this question back up again at, on the dais.
So, being the only one not there during the discussion, all right, I'm not asking, I, for me, it really wasn't about this, bringing this up, it really was about a policy. Um, I'm more of a, I, in, in, in the years on dais, I've learned that if somebody makes a decision, if it, you don't get what you want, sometimes you just don't get what you want. We're not, um, we're not, as someone on the radio likes to say, we're not all in elementary, you know, third grade soccer, where everybody gets a trophy at the end of the season, no matter what. So, we don't always get it, I, I, I'm looking at this and, and some of the other projects, if you're looking at the estimates, are gonna cost more than what this one is. I, I guess I would, I'm okay with letting it be, I mean, you guys made your decision, you, you voted, you discussed, and we can't always undo what we don't want undone, but I really do wanna make sure we have this discussion about future policies, so we don't find ourselves in a position again where maybe we don't like what, you know, maybe we didn't feel like we made the best choice, and, and so, I'm not gonna, I, I'm good with just, even it being.
But I, I'm not trying to stop Joyce, Joyce's consensus, I just wanna make sure that I understand what it is.
We just needed a vote, and I'm not-
So, Joyce, you have, we got, you got a choice, you can either withdraw your consensus, or we can vote on it. So, who's all in favor of revisiting Kipling between Thirty-second and Thirty-Fifth? Motion fails.
I think we're done then.
I don't even see it in the minute, I don't see it in a minute.
Can you say the vote?
It was in the study session, after the main meeting.
I know, can you say it into the tape?
There's both a study session and a main meeting.
Vote was, uh, for-
It was in the-
The consensus was four to three with, um, Starke, Jay and Davis voting yes.
Sorry, I was sitting here like thinking, cause I wanted to refresh my memory, I got a pretty dang good memory, too, and, uh, I wanna refresh my memory, and I'm fluttering through here, and they said that, you know, they made it sound like it was a vote, four to three, but it was a study session discussion, consensus, so it wasn't a dais vote, four to three, okay.
Okay, so that, so we're moving forward, are we done?
But there was a consensus to bring back policy discussion, correct?
Right, yeah.
Got it.
So, the consensus was to bring back a-
Right, policy discussion, right.
So, uh, I guess we're on, item two? Uh, that's your, uh- Do I do breathe easy, or, or air, oh, okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
No, no, we'll get that.
About, when's something loose? It shouldn't be that way, but it is. All right.
Okay.
PowerPoint presentation, which is not a PowerPoint presentation.
It's a, a hand, uh, y'all, y'all have a copy of the presentation, you're not gonna see it up there, Joyce, so you can stop looking. Sorry, the computer's uploading something, some, so, that's fine, we go through this. So, um, tonight, uh, I, I'm not here to talk about sales tax increases, as, um, uh, Mr. Hill suggested, but, um, just basically giving you an update on the year-end budget for two thousand and twelve, um, and some projections for the future. So, quickly, the second, um, slide on page one, um, this is a two thousand and twelve general fund budget comparison to our estimates, um, we were, came in less than we estimated for revenues, unfortunately. About two point nine percent, which was, um, equates to seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. However, expenses, we came in six point one percent less than estimated, so we saved one point six million there, so, so that balances out, so we were able to put additional, um, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand in our fund balance, um, which is good. So, we have more money in two thousand and thirteen than we expected. The main reason, um, the revenues came in, um, less than we expected, or the primary sources were, sales tax was, um, a little less than estimated, um, and then also building and retail use tax. And then municipal court fines is down quite a bit, last year, um, most of our, our CAT team, it's Police Department calls it, our traffic team, um, were injured, or out on special duty, or, so we didn't have as many cops out there writing tickets. So, we had less, uh, less people in court paying fines, so, um, and then our salary savings, the reason we saved so much in salaries, um, a big chunk was because of the weather, um, lack of snow. We spent quite a bit less on fuel and, and sand and salt and overtime, and, um, and then just salary savings in general, we always have, um, s- um, large salary savings in, in the big departments, just because people come and go. We, we always budget, we have budgeted for full salaries, um, and then insurance premiums, same thing, um, we get people coming and going, so we have extra money for our insurance. Then also the encumbrances, projects that lapsed at the end of the year, um, so they don't show as an expense in the year, but there, the monies are reserved, there's about three hundred and some thousand in the general fund, and we carry those over. So, that kind of makes up that one point six million. However, for the two thousand and thirteen budget, I'm not sure if you remember discussing this, um, it was in the budget message also, but we went through a, a variance reduction exercise, so that we don't have these large, um, excess amount of revenue at the end of the year that we don't, didn't expect, so, so some of these big line items that we have a history of, of always having a, a lot of money left over, we went through and, and computed a, use a formula to compute an average, um, amount that we were over every year, or under budget, um, and we artificially reduced those budget lines, line items in two thousand and thirteen, so that we're not over-budgeting. So, um, you may not see that one point six million dollars extra at the end of this year, so, and hopefully, I don't have to come back to you and ask for more money, because we under-budgeted and have a, too much snow this year, that, and, uh, so, but, well, we'll see, and that's a recommendation, that's a, it's a best practice of, of our governmental finance, um, office authority. Then, second slide on page two, if you look at, um, our general fund revenues in, in two thousand and twelve compared to two thousand and eleven, um, total revenues, um, right now are down about point one percent, about thirty thousand. I think this number's gonna become positive, we're still finalizing the two thousand and twelve year-end numbers, um, so I think there's more interest that needs to be accrued and accounted for in two thousand and twelve, hasn't been done yet, so hopefully, this, this, it's not gonna be a lot of money, but we should possibly be in the positive, probably pretty flat compared to two thousand and eleven. However, our two largest revenue sources, um, sales tax and use tax were both up in two thousand and twelve compared to two thousand and eleven, not, not huge amount, but one point seven percent for sales tax, and just under one percent for use tax. So, that's a good thing that our large revenue sources are increasing. The first slide on page three is just a, a bar graph, um, of comparisons of the, of the different major revenue sources, two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eleven. So, you can see that sales tax, um, was really the, the biggest increase over two thousand and eleven, everything else was pretty flat, and you, actually, some decreases in services and fines. Okay, the second chart on page three, um, this is a trend, um, of our general fund, um, revenues and expenditures from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, and you can see, um, over that period of time, our, our revenues are only increasing about one percent, um, a year, so it's not a lot of money to do any, to do much with, so that's, that's something we need to consider and keep looking at, and, and it's, it's a significant impact, because if you look at the next slide, first slide on page four, our expenses over the same period are, are, um, increasing at a higher percentage, about three percent on average on an annual basis, and that's even with two or three years of significant cuts in, because of the recession in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. We're still averaging about three percent. And that's just for general fund expenditures, if you look at the second slide on page four, um, it's the same revenue line, but the, the new orange line is the total expenses of general fund, plus all the transfers made out of general fund, and the largest transfer is for the capital budget. You know, we transfer that a million or so, and all, and back in two thousand two, seven and two thousand and eight, we were still, um, contributing quite a bit of, of money to, we were twenty-twenty, we were doing one point five million a year, so that's included in there also. So, that just shows you that when you, when you include those extra expenses above the general fund, um, daily operating expenses, um, there's a lot of fluctuation in our expenditures, and it, it, um, it's, eats into our, um, revenues and eventually our fund balance. Which, you can see the fund balance on the next, the top graph on page five, um, the green line in, on the bottom, um, incorporates the fund balance to show, um, the fluctuations, um, of our fund balance, our reserves over that same period of time, based on those revenues and expenditures, and and you can see back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we were, um, pretty close to what our current policy is in our fund balance, down in the twenties, um, and then during, after the recession, or during the recession, we cut back quite a bit, um, and put quite a bit of money back into our fund balance, so our fund balance increased in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we're starting to, um, tick back down, um, two thousand and twelve, um, at the end of the year, we're projecting a fund balance of thirty-two percent, which is higher than we originally estimated, because we're putting that additional eight hundred and forty-eight thousand in there. Um, and then this fund balance, too, just to, um, just so you understand, this is our unrestricted fund balance, um, our total fund balance includes also the Tabor required emergency reserves, which is three percent of our budget, so that's about just under a million dollars, we have to keep that in a separate pot. There's also money in, in our total reserves for our Channel Eight cable programming, because we get funds, um, specifically from our, our residents that have to be used for that. And then there's also right now about a four hundred thousand dollar, um, CD at, at First Bank, that's collateral against the Urban Renewal Authority loan again for the properties, so those are all restricted, um, this is just the unrestricted portion. Second graph on page five is, is just kind of, um, something interesting, I thought you would like to see, this is just the fluctuation in our capital budget, unfortunately, it, it fluctuates, um, quite a bit. The red line is the total expenditures and capital budget, um, the green line is, is the transfers we've been making from the general fund, um, it's been as low as zero dollars in two thousand and nine to, uh, three, almost three million dollars in two thousand and eight. So, it kind of goes all over the place, and then the, um, the yellow line is the total revenues that the CIP budget gets, um, the biggest portion comes from the general fund that transfer, but they're, they also get, CIP also gets a lot of grants, um, and some lodgers tax, and a few other, um, dollars. Page six, top graph, um, so, funding the capital investment program, the CIP, um, as I mentioned, the general fund transfer is, is usually the primary source of revenue for our capital projects. projects, and as I mentioned before, our general fund revenues are barely keeping up with, cannot keep up with total expenditures, so we've been using our reserves to fund the capital projects. Y'all adopted a unrestricted fund balance policy in 2011, that sets our, some percentage levels for the fund balance, at 17% as a minimum, 25% to target, and 35% as a maximum fund balance. Anything above 35% would, I think the policy states, goes into our capital budget. And then the policy establishes appropriate use of the fund balance. Page seven, top graph, continuing with funding of CIP, in the general fund, this year is transferring $860,000 to the CIP budget, that's a small amount compared to what we usually do. To maintain that 25% targeted fund balance per your policy, no additional funds at this point can be transferred in the future based on projected revenues and expenditures in the future. We could drop the fund balance to the 17% minimum, and it looks like we could fund an additional 1.7 in 2014, so we may have another buffer year based on, you know, conservative revenue and expenditure estimates. So, that's a very quick update on kind of where we're at. I started looking at 2013 numbers, actually there was a listserv question going around today about, from a bunch of cities, of what January sales tax numbers are, and they're really high across the state, double digit. We are about 8% up in January, our sales tax specifically, and I think our total general fund revenue through February is up about 3%. So that's kind of where we're at right now. It's hard to get a real solid picture this early in the year, because a lot of our large revenue sources are two months behind, because they get filtered through the county or through the state, so we don't see a lot of those. So, we'll give you a good report after the full first quarter to see where we're at, but so far revenues are up, and everybody's, most cities are experiencing very large, double-digit sales tax increases in January for some reason. I don't know if just last January was so bad, or what.
Just to clarify on page seven top, you're saying to maintain the 25%, no additional funds, that means that even though it's looking like we're at 32% right now, you expect that to go down to 25% by the end of this year?
2013, correct. When we do the 2014 budget, there will be just enough money to fund the general fund plus keep a 25% reserve, there won't be any funds to transfer to the CIP budget, that's what we're projecting.
Right, so, but again, to be clear, the 32% metric that you have on the fund balance in, on page five essentially won't be there at the end of this year.
Or after next, it will be for this year, but by, when we fund the 2014 budget, it will eat that up.
Got it. Any questions or comments?
So, let's, go ahead Bud.
Give me an example of some of the projects that we would fund under the capital investment program.
Some of the projects we would fund in capital? Well, like the 32nd and Youngfield, mostly street projects, our preventative street maintenance program, so our asphalt overlay, crack seal, any major drainage project, Chase Street project that we have budgeted for this year, what else is in there? Any facility, major facility improvement, we do have a threshold, I can't remember exactly what the dollar amount is, but, and then a useful life value, too, we have a formula we use to determine what goes in there. Actually have this year's budget, I think, here somewhere, which I could tick through, more projects. So, yeah, a major drainage project, street projects, any traffic projects, if, we used to budget for neighborhood traffic management, traffic signal improvements, again, facilities improvements. Then, yeah, utility undergrounding, we used to have a line item that we... Yeah, we used to fund utility undergrounding.
That's what I was gonna ask, though, if we're doing a project on 29th and, you mentioned it today, that was a good idea, is there a possibility of using some of our capital funds for undergrounding at 29th and Depew for that water project?
I don't know, it just hit me that, when I was thinking about this, and I mentioned this to Jerry today, that we're about to improve the frontage where there's water tanks are a lot, and there's a block over around power there.
That might be included in the project, I can check.
Oh, really?
I don't know, let me check.
It just seemed like it, I wasn't looking for specific alternatives, I was looking for just thought process about what we do and double look at.
We might have to rethink that project on 29th.
Ooh.
He's dissing ya on the drainage.
Oh, you mean Chase?
Come on!
The drainage project, or the water project? So, any questions on those numbers? Otherwise, you know, we had a retreat a couple, is it two years ago already, or a year and a half ago? We talked about budget and potential revenue enhancements, we had a phone poll conducted, and that was presented to you, and at that time we decided not to do anything immediately, but based on this budget picture, any direction for staff at this time?
Yeah, use your mic. Yeah, I think council wants to look at it a little bit. Use your mic, could your mic turn on?
This is obviously not going the direction we want, and I think when we have our retreat, we have to look at, not, what is it, we're calling it revenue enhancements, that we may have to consider options along those lines, and I think, as I recall, our poll was positive in some direction that way.
It was about 50, 50, almost, if I remember, in general, yeah.
It was close.
Which, honestly, I don't think is too bad for a poll before any education was done.
Exactly, yeah, I do.
Well, you did say you will check in on, to see about the undergrounding over there on Fenton, for the, because I'm a huge undergrounding fan, don't take me wrong, I would underground...
Are we talking about budget?
As far as revenue for capital, could you check and see if 29th and Fenton is gonna be undergrounded?
As part of the Denver Water Project? Yeah, I'll check into that.
Mr. Pond?
Well, I don't know when we are doing a retreat, or, I guess I supposed after last year that we were gonna have this discussion again, I don't know in what venue, or if it's only gonna be tonight, it's obviously not enough time tonight to talk about it, but, you know, and I think where we left off, if I recall, was we shorted ourselves on time a little bit, all things considered, and probably left ourselves without the time to do an education program and to look at all the options, and then go out and communicate those options in advance of a ballot question and all that, so...
Last year, of course.
Last year, right, so I mean, so I guess, I mean, my thought would be that we make sure that we're not at least doing that again.
Yep.
I don't know what that means, but I, obviously...
If we really wanted to do something this year, it's time, I mean, it can't wait for this session, I actually thought it was a 2014 item, but that was just, I don't know.
Well, that's kind of the direction we'd like to hear, I mean, you know, I know this election this November obviously is a mayor and council election, which brings up different issues and questions, and it's an off-year election, which sometimes isn't the best. Fortunately, when we brought these numbers to you months ago, it didn't look like we were gonna have any funds for 2014, but if the economy stays the way it is, hopefully we will be able to fund at least a minimal amount in 2014, so it gives us a little more time. But it's, I don't think it's something we should put off too long, even if we're not gonna do a ballot question this November, I think we need to really start educating daily now, because it's gonna be, it's gonna catch up to us quickly, unless there's other ideas that you have.
I agree.
And this could be a major discussion of our retreat again, Davis and I are working on a date and agenda, and potentially that community forum also, I think was brought up, maybe, so maybe this could, we could start asking these questions with some type of focus group also.
Your town meetings are coming up, right?
And we've got town meetings, and...
Any other questions on budget or revenue enhancements, tax increases? Okay, so are we gonna do air quality every trip counts?
It'll take two seconds. Did everybody read the memo? You okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move.
Reduce your driving, please.
And win an iPad.
iPad, yeah.
Or bus pass.
Is that not transparent enough for the public, though, do we need to...
Okay.
Thanks for sharing.
That was an elected official matter.
So, just, do I need to do it for the record? Every trip counts is a Dr. Cog program through their RAC program, it just encourages people to eliminate the two single occupancy vehicle trips per week during the summer ozone months. And RAC asked for funding for this every trip counts every two years through Dr. Cog, and we need to provide a local match, and our local match can be staff time helping out, so. And we did this in the past, last year, so, that's what it is in summary, and yeah, I... Yep, okay.
Elected officials matters, do we have any? NLC?
Davis and I are going to have a District One meeting on Friday afternoon, March the 22nd, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, bless you.
Excuse me, thank you.
At Yoel Firehouse at 3232 Depew Street, so if any of our constituents or citizens would like to attend and come and hear, we're going to have some Denver Water people talk about Ashland Reservoir, we'll talk about some of the other issues that are happening in the district, we would invite you all to come.
Will you have cocktails?
No, and no. Friday, the 22nd.
BYOC, bring your own cocktails.
Bud, what was the day and time on that?
That is going to be Friday, March the 22nd, at 5:00 to 6:00 PM.
5:00 to 6:00.
At Yoel Firehouse, 3232 Depew Street.
Anything else? Ms. Davis?
Oh, let me see, well, I would like to speak just quickly about our meet the artist this month, because it happens to be our fellow councilperson. Joyce, are you helping me? On Thursday, the 21st, 5:30, where Joyce and Tell Us More, because you're just being humble over there.
Can you use your mic, please? Can you use the mic, Joyce?
Mic, please, humble.
It's the Wheat Ridge, the Culture Commission, it's local artists, we see them once a month, and after begging and pleading and paying a lot of money, they agreed to let me on, but it is this Thursday, and I'm actually very proud to do it. And it'll be a photographic exhibit at Visions in Gold, 44th and Pierce. I'll be speaking at 6:00, and they're gonna have some refreshments, so...
Wasn't that, the picture's called "Undergrounding Unleashed"? A theme?
What time does it start? 5:30?
5:30 to 7:00.
I would love it if some of you came.
Jerry, I think you were really referring to Notes from Underground, Fyodor Dostoevsky.
Any other elected officials matters? I just wanted to real quickly say, I've been trying to meet with everybody, council one-on-one or one-on-two, and I've had some great conversations with District Two, I met with Mr. Reinhardt today, so I kind of got out of the habit, my mom was sick back in late 2009, but I'm trying to get back into it, I see Joey every weekend at Pietrus, so I don't have to worry about meeting with Joey, but I like to meet with everybody once in a while just to kind of check in, and our District Two meetings went well, and Davis, I had a good discussion today, so Bud, Mike, George, anybody else, you wanna get together, let me know for lunch, and... So, other than that, Mr. Goff, you're invited, too. Guess we're adjourned.